Of the Hubbard's Plan Planning Board, Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom presumed to section 20 of the Acts of 2021, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. So the meeting is called to order. So do we have anybody who is here to comment on anything that does not appear later in the agenda? All right, so moving on to minutes acceptance. We have some minutes from the last meeting.
Yes, please.
There's a copy that's been on the drive. We have a copy that's available for everybody to take a look at.
I read it.
Right. So I'll be, we'll be accepting any changes or edits during the discussion section. So can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion to accept minutes for the present.
During the first, do we have a second?
Hi, second motion.
Okay, and corrections or comments?
I made a correction which already has been out in the document that is posted on our Google Drive. It was a minor little item, but it's, it's already in there. I don't even remember where it was, that's it. But otherwise it looks fine.
All right, looks pretty good to me, too. All right, so no further discussion, call it a vote.
One's eye.
Steiger, eye.
The chair is eye, the, oh, and Mr. Demali online?
Yep, Demali is eye.
And the chair is eye, the minutes are accepted. So moving down the agenda, we have a, we have new business. First item on new business is actually going to be a A and R. During the presentation of that, I'm gonna go eat a cookie.
And I am as well.
My goodness, I want to leave you an eye for that one.
I guess we're the important people here.
I guess so. Oh, Level Pond. All right, the name of the applicant is Level Pond Sporting Club. And what are we trying to do here with A and R?
Yep, I'm Alex from Zoc Surveyors.
I'm Alex.
And the, Mr. Seewee is planning on selling his house at 22 Street Road sometime soon. And prior to him selling it, he wanted to make that lot a little smaller and I believe he plans on selling the rest of the backland to the Sporting Club. So wanted to do this A and R so we can get the house on the market and sell it with the 15 acres or so in the house.
And where's the backland that's going to the?
Where it says remaining land of the, you got it?
Oh, okay.
Yep, 18, a little over 18 acres, yeah.
So the lot right now is comprised of Lot A plus the remaining land of Mary and Sue family trust?
Yes.
This little section here?
Existing driveway on right away.
It's not, is that part of it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Well, if in the little triangle at the top?
Yes, yes.
That is part of Lot A?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep.
Do you have any questions?
And the, the remaining land doesn't have any road frontage, so that's why it's not a legal lot. So it's gonna be deeded to the, uh, the club.
Or with the frontage. I don't have any questions. It's pretty cut and dry.
Well, we have to go through the list.
All right.
We'll go back to the list here.
Yeah, we have a list for the A and Rs, and the first one is the property boundaries, North Point, Dayton Scale.
By the way, we probably should ask John if he has had any, well, he has not seen this here, right? Hey, John?
Oh, John, I'm sorry, yes. Have you seen the, um, the A and R plan? Is it on the drive?
It is not on the drive.
It is not on the drive. Can we put that up for the camera for him?
I mean, he has to?
Well, it's this one over here.
Yeah, I guess my question here is, is do we? Question on A and R, we have two, yes.
Sure.
Oh.
We have, uh, we have a situation here where this is on Level Pond.
So we have?
As a result of this here, Christopher cannot join us. And we only have John, Bill, myself.
Three members of five-member board.
We do, except for the fact that John is remote and he has not seen this map. What's your thought?
Can we put it up to the, him to see on the camera?
You can.
Okay.
Yes, you can.
Where do we put it for him to see on the camera?
This is the camera right there.
No. John, can you see it?
Yes, I can.
Want me to go closer?
No, that's fine.
This is your job, isn't it?
That looks fine.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that we're not doing something that's gonna cause us trouble.
Does it have frontage?
Yeah, so we're just gonna go through this list right now?
It's actually being divided up. The Lot A is going with the existing driveway to the left of Lot A, and then I believe
The remaining land of the Mary and Sue family trusts.
It's gonna go to Level Pond Sporting Club, correct?
Correct.
But it doesn't show the adjoining land that it's, and it's on the other side of the town.
The, the, the rest of the land is the pond and whatever properties the, the club owns to the south.
It doesn't have a statement that says, once divided, everything will be in compliance? It, the remaining lot is not a building lot. It is to be conveyed to Lovewell Pond Sporting Club.
Oh, this is, this is.
Conveyed in an act, right?
Yeah.
What happens if it isn't conveyed in an act? Are you creating a, a, an orphaned lot is the only other question?
Well, uh, according to, according to the club members, that, that this is, I don't know if, he, he's saying that what, what, what happens if the Seewees change their mind and say, okay, they're not gonna sell it to the club? Was there some sort of agreement with the Seewees in the, in the club? Okay.
Have a written agreement?
Nope, right now it's all verbal, but we, we're working with an attorney right now. Dick is aware, he actually, Dick's the one who signed the application for this, and we'll be expecting upon approval, closing on it before the end of the month.
What are your recommendations, sir?
I was hoping you were gonna ask that question.
I'm filling in for Chris, so.
Well, it does, so, William already places associates the planning board's consultant. The property has minimal frontage, existing frontage, and I assume that none of the adjacent land is owned by this property owner? The property owner is who?
Uh, the Seewee Trust.
Okay, so they're not there, they're not there, commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Correct.
Okay, so the frontage is what the frontage is?
Correct.
And?
Which is going with A and the house, yeah.
And you're not creating any not, more non-conforming?
Correct, correct.
Why? Because it has insufficient frontage.
Right, but it's going with theirs, but we just don't have the written, written agreement that you're talking about.
You can't condition an A and R.
Okay.
So you either take the word of the applicant where the applicant provides you sufficient proof that it will be conveyed in an act.
What kind of proof do we have?
The verbal proof?
He's saying what, what type of proof is there?
Can you identify yourself, sir?
That this conveyance is going to happen.
Sir, could you identify yourself for the?
Name and address.
Chuffrey, Street Road. I mean, right now it's all, as far as I know, it's all been, you know, discussed, you know, verbal with Dick.
Do you represent the, do you, do you represent the, uh?
I'm vice president of the club.
Okay, and so you're representing the club in that sense?
But we do, we said, well, it's, right now we have an attorney who's working up the documents, but until it gets approved, you know, we weren't gonna go any further with it, so.
I'll take the word for it.
I, I, I mean, given your role, given the title that you have, and, and what you have said, yes, I can, I can take that as, as being satisfying.
Yep.
That criteria.
I agree as well.
Thank you all. So we'll go forward with the checklist, is any other questions like that?
Bill, do you have any other concerns that we need to have right off the bat? And, and gentlemen, I, we just wanna make sure that this is not gonna come back flying to us and have you then have a problem.
Check.
That's why I, we're just double checking, okay?
Try to be cautious.
Absolutely.
It's just that it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, meaning it has insufficient frontage, but it exists that way.
Right.
Then by subdividing, this is me verbally putting logic out there.
Thinking about it.
I was pulling the rags out. By subdividing it, they're not creating a more non-conforming lot because they have plenty of fronted, uh, they have plenty of lot area to comply with the other aspects, and they have no ability to modify their frontage. I'm just wondering if they need relief from the zoning board of appeals for you to sign this because it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
For it to be in a draw by another one that has the frontage.
Well, the real land of the existing lot isn't. So it's a modification of a pre-existing non-conforming, which usually goes.
Well, this is actually made up of multiple lots.
Yes, but, but, but what he's saying is, is the frontage.
Right.
The land they own along the street.
That's how, that's how it's always been, in other words.
Yeah, he, he was received approval, I think in 92 when he built the house.
But you're, you're correcting a lot.
Modifying a non-conforming, yeah.
What's your recommendation, sir?
Did I just walk in?
Yes, you did. Since you're our expert.
Give me just a couple minutes to look at your zoning bylaw.
Sorry, gentlemen, just give us a minute, please.
John, I just emailed you the A and R and I dropped it into the Google Drive if you need to take a look at it closer.
I hope it wasn't too heavy.
Thank you.
So Tricia, when it gets to them, you're gonna need to make her a, a whole session.
Well, I, we need to know whether they're really, well, otherwise they have to go to the ZBA person secretly. Where is the club in relationship to this map?
Isn't it around the bottom to the side?
I believe, I believe it's on the Grimes Road, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so it'd be?
It's down here.
Way to the south, yes.
So this, this piece of property here will be absorbed, but it's not gonna be adjoining, and it's not gonna be?
Well, well, the club owns the pond, so essentially it will be adjoining.
Sorry.
Okay, so section 2.23 of the zoning bylaw, non-conforming use structure or lot, which is this is. A used structure or lot which lawfully existed at the time of adoption of these zoning bylaws, which does not conform to the requirements of these zoning bylaws and which may be continued in the circumstances set forth under section 3.4 of these zoning bylaws. Section 3.4 does not help. 3.4 says where district boundary divides any lot existing at the time such district boundary is adopted, the regulations for any district in which lot has frontage on a street may be extended no more than 50 feet into the other district, however the land within this 50-foot area shall be controlled and consisted manner by the regulations applicable to only one district. So it does, the zoning bylaw does not address this. So I think it's a hanger.
That, that's if it was, what you read, that's if it was in two different, two different zones.
Exactly, 3.4 doesn't apply.
No, it doesn't help.
I think it's a hanger, and I think it is?
Is that a technical term?
That is a zoning term to say that you have to hang your hat on your best judgment. And?
But does not require a ZBA review?
The only way that, that's for the billing inspector to make a determination on, so you either, you either, you either make a determination that you're making a non-conforming lot, not further non-conforming.
Which at this point in time, we believe it is indeed the case.
Right.
Based on what we have seen here as, alright.
And no hardship is created.
Correct.
And that's enough, and that's, and that is clear from what we're seeing here also.
That would be my opinion, too.
Okay.
John, did you hear what you said?
Yes, I agree, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So given, given these facts, I would say that at this point in time, we would be willing to accept this here as a, as something that will not, uh, uh, adversely impact your, your request.
In the A and R checklist we have to go over, we're looking for a property boundaries, North Point, Dayton Scale.
So we do have the property boundaries?
North Dayton Scale.
North Point, Dayton Scale.
Name of the record owner.
Record owners are indicated here.
But registered land surveyor?
Yes, we do have that.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
And what's the, what's the registry of deeds book and page reference of conveyance to the record owner that wouldn't, that wouldn't be here yet, correct?
Well, well, yeah, the, the deed reference for the, for the existing, yes.
Oh, for the existing, okay.
So?
There it is right here.
It's in, it's in the title block, I know that.
And you have that up here.
Okay. Area of each lot.
15.1, 18.28 in Hupperton and .158 in Westminster.
Sufficient data to determine the location, direction, length of every street, wayline, lotline, and boundary line. Okay? Monuments, monuments, references necessary to establish the lotlines on the ground.
Which, is it up here?
Yeah, yeah. Where practical boundary lines and contiguous adjacent land and the names of the owners there are, as determined from the most recent tax list.
We have those.
Location of all permanent monuments properly identified, which we've seen.
Yeah.
Location names and present widths of non-public private ways of building the property. And I believe the Street Road, no, we made that up to Towne, right? So that's, that's what's saying, there is no private ways here, I believe.
Correct.
Uh, suitable space to record the endorsement of the board that is approved for the signatures? Zoning classification, location of any zoning district boundaries?
And rely within the locus of the plan?
Yeah. Location of all existing buildings, including setback, side, and rear yard destinations.
I didn't, I didn't show any of the setbacks because it's so far.
So, so the only building I see here is Building 22?
The house, yeah.
That's the house. This says we have to show the side, the setbacks.
The, the, the new property line that's being created, the only new property line is this, this long dividing line here.
Right here, yeah.
So, I mean, it's one inch equals 100 feet, so.
But is this to scale, so?
Yes, oh, yes.
Number 22, what I'm saying is, is the building is within scale of the boundary line?
What do you mean within?
So the distance from 22's, uh, side to the boundary line would be, we could deduce it by the scale of what you're doing.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Have a ruler?
Five hundred feet, maybe? Need a ruler?
There's one in the closet.
Yes, here.
I know where my rulers are. I don't care where.
I will know for next time we have an A and R, a ruler needs to be in my bag.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir. So it'd be fair to say it's between 400 and 425 feet away from?
I, I guess 500, but.
You were close.
And between 400 and 450. So it'd be Corbinir and Towne of Hupperton, actually Towne of Hupperton. And there's no change here, so it's, it's really to this one here, so it is over 400 feet.
Do you have a checklist?
Do you have them memorized?
I don't.
By now?
Hey, uh, location of area of any wetlands of the lots being created by the plan?
On this one, there's none?
I don't see if.
Just a giant pond.
Other than the pond itself.
So please make sure that is.
Correct.
The wetlands on the remaining land the applicant may provide written sort of case from the surveyors, but we don't have a problem with that, so I believe we're, we're in compliance with our checklist.
Or anything else on the checklist?
No. That we need to do.
Okay.
And I can't open it.
John, I'm assuming you have heard everything that we have discussed here?
Yes, I have.
Okay, are you satisfied from your end?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
This being an A and R, it does not require a vote from our perspective.
So all we need to do is sign.
John, you will need to come down to my office sometime this week to sign it, and then I will hand it over to be brought to the registry of deeds.
Do we have to sign that one, or should we sign this one?
Um, you guys can sign that one. The, the Mylar is right on top.
And you have a, uh?
I do, always do.
We should, all.
Okay.
John, you want me to sign your name?
Very funny guy.
You're being recorded.
I know. So the other member has to come down.
He will come down. Uh, John, do you have time tomorrow to come down? I'm working nine to three.
Yes, I'll be there.
Okay, I will call you as soon as he?
Okay, okay.
Um, so, uh, before you leave, just make sure I, uh?
You're gonna date it, or?
I, I, I believe, I think Peter is going to take care of it.
Okay, then I will call Peter.
Yeah, Peter will pick it up.
Okay, perfect.
I believe he's gonna take care of paperwork.
You will date it?
I will date it.
And we only need to sign this one, right?
And you only need to sign that one, correct?
I'll leave this here for you to date it.
Doesn't, doesn't the assessor need a signed copy? A paper one?
Here.
I don't want to sign yours.
Yeah.
Just sign yours, sign them all.
I think you should at least sign one or two paper copies.
I'm supposed to sign one. I think the Templeton, they haven't had the original, like, four, so I'm trying to sign them all.
We used to sign them all.
We used to sign them all.
Yeah, I, you probably should. Sorry.
It costs more. You charge me for more signature.
I bet that's true. At the rate you get paid.
It's endless.
Zero.
I have my own.
This is our copy.
That is?
Meaning your copy.
Meaning my copy, the one that's in the pretty back skin, not my next. And we keep a signed copy as well.
I'm surprised they haven't agreed to have us do a electronic copy.
They lost paper.
Everyone's gotta have a copy.
Yeah, but what's it coming?
If John has to sign it, so then?
He does have to sign it, yes.
Yeah, the way we were, there was a problem.
Leaving my duties, I believe.
No.
Couple more times.
Thank God.
That's what happens.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, it cannot go home with you tonight? Uh, yeah. But I will call you tomorrow once it's signed.
I'm going ice fishing tomorrow.
Where are we going?
Be doing a message. Almost like you live straight away from me.
Well, then, you can drop it off.
Drop it off.
Oh, there you go.
Delivery service.
Thanks, Alex.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a great night.
You as well.
All right, well, moving down the list, and thank you, everybody, for hanging in. That sounded like it was a lively discussion. Next on the agenda, and, agenda is a presentation from MRPC on master plan.
I have my computer, if you want me to bring it right here? Yeah, we can.
And I need you, I need you a hold, so you can present at any time.
Okay, great.
Thank you, though.
Sure. You guys really got me on that one.
He's already billing, you know, so.
Oh, that's true.
Can we sit up at the table?
Yes, absolutely. We have not to exceed.
We can sit there, where?
The good thing about that, nobody can get back and question you anymore.
Well, they always can, but yeah.
There's plugs over here.
I have plugs under that.
Tracy, there's plugs over here.
Is it?
Yeah.
Uh-oh, you're coming to the bad side, huh? You got another outlet here?
Uh, maybe on the other side? No, that's it. Wait, let me see, I'm not using. Take mine as your.
Wait a minute, aren't you guys planners? Couldn't you have helped on that one?
They, they were talking about their. It's kinda rude to interrupt. We don't wanna interrupt.
Thank you.
No, we all get it.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna sit in, I'm just sitting here, being quiet, dude. I'll say nothing. How am I doing?
Anything could be your job.
No, this is not my board. I don't sit on his board, I'm just.
You're every meeting, so you're part of the board now?
No, it's because I am your liaison.
I thought he was.
No.
So you're both part of our board?
No, I'm not part of your board.
Neither one of us actually.
Oh.
Nice job.
Ex officio?
No, that's issue, no, no, not happening. Not on this board, no.
Did he hear you out?
What's, what's wrong?
Technology has problems. We recently had a, what did we even have?
We did an update and?
Updates are great.
Nothing has been seen.
We updated a Windows 11, everybody's machine, like, crashed out.
That's why I keep my Windows 7.
I haven't heard anything good about Windows 11.
Well, we all know what computer to try to hack now.
You leaving our radio?
Sorry. I think my reading glass.
Oh, oh, here, can use mine.
Do you have a, a deck or?
Do you have a, oh, did you bring a thumb truck?
No, I didn't.
That's what we've been trying to solve for the last half hour.
What's that?
In her rush to leave the office, I ran out with all my papers and all my, in my thumb drawer, so.
From memory, then.
Like the A and R checklist?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's why I rely on him.
So have you had a thumb drive, would it work?
No, her thumb.
My thumb drive.
Oh, your thumb drive?
I would hate updates, cause every time I did it, everything would crash.
In the event you need it.
Thank you. My apologies for that.
No problem. I mean, I would say we could go by the order, but, uh, Bill just walked out, so.
That's him, so.
Is that, okay, were you ladies?
If you, if you think a couple more minutes, we'll give you a chance to get it sorted out. All right, so let's, uh, let's revise the order, and, uh, let's go with. What was the next one, was the next one?
It was actually the annual report, did we wanna do that first?
Yeah, let's go with the annual report, cause that'll be.
Okay, let's do the annual reports. If everybody would see to their, behind the A and R, behind the A and R report is your solar report from Cursage Energy.
Oh, yes.
Energy.
Oh, right here.
Yes.
I got it.
Tracy, do you have access to your email on your phone?
I do not.
No? Does it just email to me?
Maybe.
Is this the first one we've received?
That is the first one we usually, we did talk about it this afternoon a little bit, um, usually asking for annual reports would go out with their tax bill, because these people, it's not privately owned, so I could just mail someone and say, hey, annual report time, I'd like your annual report.
Right.
So I will, um, do some sleuthing and find out who I need to contact for their annual report, yes.
I, I think this is the, um, this is gonna be a problem that you will be confronted with.
Yes.
And that's all right.
This is my fifth year on this, uh, board.
This is the first one we've got.
And, uh, yeah, this is the first one that we received, so. Some point in time, I think, after we review this here, we can maybe discuss how do we encourage more forcefully all of the other, um, solar fields to comply with this request and requirement.
Yeah, there's some discussion that's on the record from previous meetings, I think we had talked about, uh, a few options, the first one being, um, included in the tax bill, um, cause some of these are actually owned by like asset-backed trusts.
Mm-hmm.
They, uh, they get turned into financial instruments and resold on Wall Street, so it's sometimes tough to find the person who's actually responsible for it, um. And we talked about SOP for sending out the notices, but if, if I remember correctly, there's a couple, or one of them, that doesn't have the requirement for the annual permit, was it the first one?
Most likely the first one, never had.
The one with the honor roll, right?
Right.
Hmm, no, I don't think that's the earliest one. We'd have to check them.
No, no, no. What's the fir, it was Williamsell?
Williamsell, yeah.
Looks like a picture book, no?
Uh, I think Williamsell was.
Williamsell?
And either way, this will be a process that we'll have to dig, uh, a little bit further into, and, um, and come back to, but it is good that we got one.
Yeah, I'm surprised. No, it's true.
And it is simple.
Yeah.
It's, it's not.
Hey, it's something.
No, what I'm saying, it is simple, it's, it's, it's very basic information that we're asking and requesting that they provide us with.
And these folks did.
Well, and, and to the point on, um, from our last meeting, looking at the financial statements, we're holding huge cash bonds on, on some of these, so. You would think that they would be pretty good about keeping us in the loop, because somebody's gonna want that hundred grand back someday, but, we'll see. All right, uh, I don't, we don't really have any action to take on that, and, uh. So, looking back at the agenda. Do you guys need a little more time, if that.
Yeah, when's your next meeting? I can't even get this.
Oh, no.
I can access our drives for my email online.
I'm, I am more than happy to come back.
Yeah, so.
I apologize, cause it's.
That does raise the discussion of our next meeting, uh, this is a weird shaped month, uh, and because it's a weird shaped month, the.
Next meeting's next week.
Next meeting is next week.
Yeah.
So sometimes in those months, we skip those meetings, but this could be a good one to, uh, not skip that meeting, uh, especially, uh, this going forward to it.
Yeah, cause you can.
You mean Valentine's Day?
Is it Valentine's Day?
It's actually the fifteenth, uh, it's the first Wednesday of every month, and then the third Thursday, but because Thursday was the first of this month, it, yeah, it falls next week, so it'll be the fifteenth.
Yeah, so fifteenth. Third day.
Oh, so.
Wow!
Because the first. Because the first. Because the first Thursday is always the commission meeting.
We were buddy headwaters with the board, so we had to change our meeting dates.
Yeah.
Yeah, six thirty.
The MRPC is why, the one we're about not against, that's why.
Still six thirty.
Is there one else? Oh.
So it's the fifteenth, the meeting will be the fifteenth.
Yeah, that's why we hadn't been.
Still six thirty?
Okay.
Still six thirty in this room, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that was why we hadn't had anybody really attending the meeting for years, because they were always held on the same.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, that's right, okay, yeah.
Like, wasn't this people meeting?
Is there a preference for us, and it's maybe something we can discuss afterwards, it matters, not, it's a little bit discredited by the chair, uh, as to whether or not we want to do this here, uh, on the twenty-second?
I have, well, we should discuss that right now, we have.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do this?
Well, we just started my doing it.
Well, yeah, but.
Perfect.
I'm just saying, I don't wanna take things out of, because, okay, let's go ahead.
And then that way, if it does crash, I can pull it up on my computer and we can go from there.
All right, so let.
Perfect.
So let's.
So make a motion to change that?
Well, no, let, let's continue the scheduling, the, well, let's have the scheduling discussion, not continue it, um, so there was a suggestion from, uh, Francois, that perhaps we wanna consider doing the following week instead of next week, so I wanted to.
I will not be that week, just as I said.
You will not be here that week entirely, because you have school vacation week, right?
And I will be in North Carolina, so I could call in from North Carolina, but if you would need documents or anything like that, I would kind of be at a loss to be able to get them to you.
Can do, actually.
Well, if.
I'm fine with that.
This is likely going to be pretty much the only thing on that agenda, except for possibly the acceptance of a special permit, but.
Which will be good.
Okay, I will not be here on the fifteenth, is where I'm going.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if, if it, I gotta go with the core of the members in this board.
That's totally fine, I just wanted to let you know that.
So, yeah, I guess we're talking about the, the twenty-second, if it works for you guys.
The twenty-second.
It would for me, but again, I leave it to the discretion of every member of this, uh, board.
I just to check, that is a Thursday, right?
Right, it is a Thursday, decided a fifteenth or the twenty-second.
Okay. Yeah, so let's do, let's do the twenty-second, if that works for everybody, if that gets more members.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not available that week.
You're not available that week.
I can't get.
I guess we'll go with fifteenth. Nope.
Um.
I'm sorry.
Almost a middle back.
What are you guys doing tomorrow?
That, that might have us at the fifteenth, because you're certainly the dispensary party for it. So I guess we're looking back at the fifteenth.
That's fine, I, again, I just will not be able to attend.
Okay, yeah, I think.
Or maybe able to attend via Zoom, I have to check on timing.
Okay.
Have to bring somebody to your airport.
Okay, well, I think we just, we're gonna have to do what we gotta do, so let's go with the, the fifteenth, because we need, we need to make sure MRPC can make it, so.
Okay.
Or else it will be a very, very boring presentation from MRPC, um.
So can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, so has everybody read the whole thing, or are we, um, and are we gonna receive comments back at this next meeting, or are we just gonna, she's gonna give the presentation, and then we're gonna discuss everything?
So. So we've read the first couple chapters, um, and depending upon what we talked about tonight, we're gonna send the other chapters out, uh, to the appropriate department heads and boards that should pine on them.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
And tell them that they need to get their feedback back to us in March, um, at the latest.
Okay.
And then from there, the, the planning board would go and would have its votes on them, um, but in terms of what we assigned for required reading for tonight, it was the intro and the land use chapter, um, but, uh, but we haven't assigned the other ones to the planning board yet.
Okay.
I, I, um, as part of my presentation, the first thing I was gonna do was go over the spreadsheet that showed different things within each, um, chapter that I worked on, that, cause I thought that might be useful, cause I know that you've seen these iterations of these more than once, so I thought if we just started there, and then we could kinda focus, you know, and then I, so for tonight, I had, so for next Thurs-, uh, yeah, Thursday, next Thursday, I was gonna do the introduction, and then I saw on the agenda you had land use, and then I was going to, um, start looking at implementation, but if you'd rather me not, then I don't, I don't need to do that, I can pull that back.
Um, well, let's. Let's talk to Nate, uh, about that line, and figure out what he wants to, cause the implementation chapter was certainly the biggest from his perspective.
Okay, sure. Okay. Sure. Yes.
Um, and I know from just the, the time that I spent looking at the land use chapter, there's some stuff that definitely looks like it got cleaned up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was off, but there was one thing I did notice, uh, it was the history on farming in Ashburnham.
Mm-hmm.
Under agriculture.
Yeah.
Um, where in Hubbardston?
God, jeez.
It's an important place. Um, and I know that this is, this is kind of the document of, uh, thesis where, um, it's been just kind of like, there's not even the same people I'm just thinking of when they started.
Mm, right.
So, where, uh, we just, we don't, we're not gonna let perfect get in the way of good, um, but there were just a couple of things like that, and I can, I can reach out about it, and there are probably sections, um, that we hadn't sent back to you as things that we flagged as problems.
Okay.
Like the land use calculations, those were a bit problem, um.
Mm-hmm. The, um, the developable, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because the, um, uh, it had come to my attention from the last land use clerk that the numbers didn't add up, um, and they appeared to this time, but, uh, essentially it doubles the inventory of developable land from, I thought it was in the original version, there was one version that had it come in at like two percent.
Yeah, but, um, I believe when I did my calculations, it was like four point seven five, um, percent.
Yeah.
So, okay.
But, uh, yeah, it's the, it's the document of a thesis, of a thesis, so, uh, yeah, let's talk about it next week, I'll, I'll have a couple other kind of quick things I'll send over to you.
Sure.
Um, I guess the only other suggestion that I had was, there was also the development history, um, we have, and I wasn't able to put my hands on it at the time that I had available to look at this, we have a housing production plan that has a awesome development history.
Mm-hmm. Oh, nice, okay.
We should steal that.
Sure.
Is it on the webpage?
It was at one point.
It might be on the state's page as well.
It, Patricia and I worked it for.
Um, anything that has been on the webpage at any point is still technically there, Candace just lets it fall off, but she can pull it back.
No, it's just not, okay.
It's just unpublished, it's just unpublished.
Okay, okay.
It's still there, it's just unpublished, so I can ask Candace for a copy of that and send it over to you, and.
That's great.
Yeah, and the, the reason I think that, that, um, building that out matters, uh, a little bit, is, um, from a residential development standpoint, kind of the wave of development that happened in the late nineties and the early two thousands, is kind of core to what's gone on in Hubbardston today, and folks have drawn some parallels between what's going on, so it'd be good to sneak in some of that information.
Mm. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Sure.
It's in your inbox. Excellent.
Right, it's in your inbox.
Perfect.
We can't check it, but let's do it.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll, um, I'll send you a couple more detailed comments, just so you can be buttoned up before then.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah.
Um, and I'll, I'll copy you on the letter that, uh, that we sent out to the department heads and such on feedback, um, because the commitment that I made at the last, uh, chair and department head meeting was that this is going to be done before our annual town meeting.
Okay. Absolutely.
Which means at the latest, I, I don't wanna be waiting on feedback from any of them in March, so if they don't have it, we're just gonna go on without them, so, because this is, this is getting done.
Yes, absolutely.
Correct? Awesome, well, sorry that didn't work out, but.
It's, it's, uh, not worked.
Sorry for your pain.
Can I just, just tomorrow, just send it all to me?
I will do that, absolutely.
I'll put it into the Google Drive, and that way if you, meetings do need to be shuffled along that here, everything is in the Google Drive, ready to go for that meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
No problem.
Mr. Chair, twenty seventeen, by law.
That sounds reasonable. Twenty seventeen's the last house.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
I think it was that, or it was an affordable housing, or, either way, there's a really great housing history, that was in one of those documents. I think MRPC might have been, wrote it.
Yeah, exactly.
You might have what?
I think MRPC wrote that document, that reference, and the one with the really great history in it.
Oh, that's nice.
There was a big bear at the time.
Take the, just take the way. It's been a rough.
Been around a couple of years.
All right, so moving down the list, we have places and associates on the rural opportunity.
Really?
Really, for reals, come on up.
Probably much good for the A and R.
All right, so I did this old fashioned methodology, I apologize, we personally am at the office, so I didn't get a chance to get this out, but by email.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bill.
I will, email.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want you to be bored. We love participation.
You could come up to the table, there's nobody out here.
Let me get my, uh. Like, sitting in the background like a little bit.
So, rather than, we weren't gonna worry about, uh, format and making it fit into the zoning bylaw and those kind of things, we were, for this first round, we're really looking at content and suggestions, because it was, in general, it was not written in a zoning format way, it was, uh, more of an objective type of document to, for goals and those kind of things. So this is not intended to be a file, this is, there are decisions that the board needs to make as to scope and, and a lot of other things, so.
Do we have a copy of this that we can get to John?
I didn't email it.
Did you, John, when you.
Scan mine to him right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, Nate, John's gonna scan you a copy.
Sorry.
Just actually have to break people up.
Yeah.
You're ex officio.
Yeah.
All right, okay. So, anything that's in yellow is a question comment from my office, anything that's in red is a suggested rewording, uh, so what I'd like to suggest is, uh, perhaps you wanna just quickly glance through it, and then I can walk you through it, or I can just simply start from the beginning and work to the end.
Well, let's take a quick moment to scan it, and, uh, send it on.
So I did listen to the, uh, I watched the recording of the input session, I guess it's called.
It was a lot.
Yep.
Yeah, there were a lot of good comments.
Yes, there was.
All right, so, I guess let's jump into it, cause we're gonna all be going through it together anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, let's, uh, please walk us, walk us through what you're thinking.
So the first thought process is, we don't suggest you do this as a townwide overlay district, uh, and that was a really good comment, because it applies and is intended to apply to the entire town, and your overlay district had essentially a neighborhood that couldn't comply with the requirements, so why not just make it a general part of the bylaw? A, a zoning overlay district is usually intended for a specific use that really should be in an identified portion of town, and I'll give you the city of Gardner as an example, city of Gardner did an extensive amount of research on solar farms, and they identified, in doing their solar farms, they contacted the, the utility companies, and they looked at large landowners, and. And they looked at large landowners and they looked at what they really wanted for solar farms. So they have a solar farm overlay district. It's intended to be on the outskirts of town and it is proximal to high tension wires, et cetera. Areas that are uniquely qualified for a solar farm, so it's not in an urban center, it's not next to a neighborhood. That's what an overlay district is intended to do. It's to say this part of town, due to its unique requirements or the uniqueness of the town, needs this overlay district to accommodate. Uh, whatever the particular uses, there's an awful lot of communities use them for neighborhood enhancement districts and that kind of thing. So to do a townwide district is really in contradiction to the intent of the zoning act. So we really think, because it does, the intent as written here and as explained to me on the listening session. The intent is to be townwide and you have a few properties in town that are less than two acres. Just exclude the properties that are less than two acres and now you've achieved the same goal without burdening the zoning bylaw. So now you can say it's by right in a district. So that, that's really our, our first comment. And throughout the project, um, we're going to ask you to, or we're gonna suggest that you refer to master general laws as much as you can. So the definition of a farm is defined under master general law. And unless you need to refine it, why would you change that? So as master general law changes, so too does the definition and you don't need to go to town meeting to make that kind of change. Which, which is under purpose here, we say the purpose of the bylaws to provide opportunities for the agricultural community to supplement their farm operation income by, of course, providing their operations. So include businesses that may combine agriculture, tourism, outdoor recreation, other farm related activity. Nothing is intended to limit the protections as agriculture, tourism. So we've taken the rather wordy first paragraph and kinda brought it down to a refined purpose. But we think it meets the same objectives. And again, one point oh one, we say not an overlay, it should apply to all properties that can comply with the requirement to the bylaw. So definitions is, is a very difficult. You can, you can endlessly go on on definitions. And you're, this is where this bylaw is gonna have a lot of problems. Because you need the building inspector or a layperson to read this and say, that's clear. What they're trying to say is clear. And we're trying to, um, refine these things down so it's clear. So it, I'm not sure that our suggestions meet truly what the intent of the bylaw says. But we're proposing what we think does and, and we would like you to take a very strong look at the definitions. Because the definitions really need to, uh, they carry the weight of the bylaw. So agriculture and agriculture shall include all the branches. And we took this from master general law, uh, A through D. The only two that we wanna highlight to is the keeping of swine and the raring of fur bearing animals. We don't, we want to highlight the fact that the keeping of swine and the rearing of fur bearing animals is allowed in a town. Other towns do in fact restrict it because it's commonly known that the keeping of swine and fur bearing animals has a really derogatory effect on the environment. And impacts neighbors and flutters. And I had a conversation with Chris to say, you, you as a town have a very hard time contradicting what agriculture is allowed under state law. So that if you choose to attempt to do that in the bylaw, you have to have very specific reasons for that. And we've seen other towns do that. A lot of other towns say due to the, the, the small lot size and proximity and the fact that we're not a big town, that, that can't apply. That, that's not an argument for the town of Hubbardston, but we would have to come up with an argument along that. But this is accessory uses, so. Uh, we already did that. So that the farming operations may include as primary or incidental use the preparation for market, the agricultural support process related to the any above. Storage and delivery of raw manufacturing projects, products. This phrase is pretty open ended and I think that we need to tighten that up, which is the item page two, above agri, agritourism. Because if you say, uh, in the general terms that we do. It, it really is open ended and it needs, we need to, and I'll get into that later on in the process. I think that what the town wants is what we wrote, but if we let that stand as written. There are an awful lot of agricultural processes that you can't imagine that we might allow. And so therefore, there have to be some exclusions, and we'll get to some of those later on. We just refined the, the definition of agritourism such as U-Pick and farmers markets and retails. To be, I think, a little more clear. A farm is, as per master general law forty eight, section three, farmer's market is also defined. Open space, we just cleaned that up. So permit processes and authority, uh, that, that was pretty straightforward. I think the wording can be cleared up a little bit later on, but there is no appeal process identified. So we need to have that included in the bylaw. So if, if the building inspector says you need to go to the planning board and they don't agree, who's the arbitrator of that? Or if the planning board says you need a special permit, it's like plan review, and they don't agree, who's the arbitrator of that? And the, the common arbitrators are the zoning board of appeals, because this would be a zoning bylaw. But you could refer it to the board of selectmen instead of the zoning board of appeals, uh, if town meeting accepts that. Or you could tell them they have to go to superior court, which, which, in my opinion, taking it out of the, the, the initial appeal. You can always take anything to superior court. But in my opinion, the intent of the bylaw is to keep this process in town and make it easy for somebody to do what's intended in this bylaw.
Right.
So that's why I would encourage that, number one, you have to have an appeal process and you should, I would recommend to the planning board that you keep that appeals process a town entity. The zoning board of appeals or selectmen.
Yeah, I think that makes sense because, um, we don't wanna set something up that's gonna be inherently expensive. Right. So if ultimately we're saying the appeal authority is the superior court, we're not really saying the appeal authority is the superior court. Because if the select board chooses to not pay for an attorney, we know what way the court's gonna go on that.
Right.
So ultimately, the authority on that is the select board through the purse strings, whether or not we designate them as it or not.
Right, but then it's a zoning bylaw, so commonly any, any appeal to a zoning bylaw goes to the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
So keep the, this is a discussion, we're not, we're not, we're not even about finalizing a bylaw here.
I like what you're saying about keep it under the state law, that makes it much easier and it's more defining.
Right, I mean, if you're, if you don't like what the building inspector said, we can say you gotta go to the planning board and make determination. And then if you don't like the planning board said, and or if you're automatically triggered to the planning board, the zoning board of appeals would be your next step.
Right.
So I did, we didn't insert the planning board being the appeal process for the building inspector and I don't honestly think you should. I think it should go to the zoning board of appeals, period. Yeah, so we don't, again, the comment on top of page three is you don't mention filing process at all. We need to establish a filing process. We need, you need to establish forms, administrative requirements and a filing fee. And then one of the things that is a pet peeve of mine is the filing fee should be established by a schedule. And the schedule is established by the planning board so that you refer to a fee and a fee schedule. And then if you want to change that, the change of the fee and the fee schedule is by vote of the majority of the planning board.
Yeah.
If you incorporate the fees in the zoning bylaw, you gotta go to town meeting to change the, the fee schedule.
I completely agree with that because that's a problem that we have in a few places.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I very much, uh, agree. Um, so what would, what would the outcome there be? We would just say, um, the planning board shall promulgate administrative rules for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that is certain that we would want to do.
And then, uh, and then on the application form, and I've seen, it depends on how many pages you want it to be. It could be two pages because there's a lot going on in here. What I'd like to see is applicant, owner, applicant, property, and then a checkbox list of uses. And if you're in the first half of the page, then you go to the building inspector. Because it's a by right use, it's an allow, or, you know, other determined, as determined by the building inspector. So if you don't get to, let's, let's say it's page one and page two of the application front and back. If you don't get, you don't need to get to page two on the various listed uses. Then you go straight to the building inspector, it's a by right use, he signs off on it, tax collector signs off on it, off you go and it's not complicated. If you have to flip the page because your use is on page two, your site plan review, planning board, special permit or whatever is defined. So that it's a real straightforward process. And I mean, that form work really identifies to the layperson what they're making an application for and whether it gets complicated or not. And it's real easy for your assistant or the building inspector to turn the page and say, oh, you're on page two, you're going to the planning board.
Makes it easy for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense.
So this next one, uh, also a pet peeve of mine, so I added it and I anticipate pushback on this one. And it's fair. Uh, I've discussed this with a lot, a lot of people. The problem with this bylaw is it's silent on all of the other permits that you have to get. If you're going to sell food, or if you're gonna sell food that you baked at home. In, in a market, you need a commercial kitchen. Until they change that law, that's the way it is. And that's a permit required from the board of health. If you have temporary or permanent sanitary facilities, you need a permit from the board of health. The provision of water supplies at any event, you need a permit from the board of health. Big party of three hundred and fifty people easily could be considered a nuisance and the board of health has jurisdiction over that.
And there is a application that they have to fill out with the conservation commission as well for a large party at some other structure. I just found it the other day.
Conservation?
Really?
Yep, there is, there is, uh, it's, uh, it's maybe been filled out maybe like twice in Mallory's history, let alone Mark's before me. Um, but there is, and I can send it over, there is a form, it just, it got dropped on my desk the other day, like, hey, you didn't know if you knew this was a thing.
I'd love to see that.
Yeah, I'd love to see that too.
Yeah.
Because the, the conservation commission has jurisdiction within a hundred feet of, of wetland and then two hundred feet of a river and that's it. Or if you damage a wet, if you damage a wetland, then they're.
Aquifers.
Yeah, I'm totally interested in seeing it.
Yeah. Well, uh, this is of course not a wholly inclusive list and it says so right up top.
No.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to bring that up, I didn't know if you guys knew about that.
But. Yeah.
That's one of my other things about ours, though, is there's so many rules and regulations and requirements and nobody knows about it.
Right.
And some of them are so overdone, that's why this is important to do it.
Right. Yeah. I, I'm conflicted, I really want you to include this, maybe it's not in the bylaw, but maybe it is page three of the application.
I agree with that, I don't think it belongs in the bylaw.
I don't think so, yeah.
I like it in the application.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to, I do food safety and I do have fur animals and all of that.
Yeah.
I eat them every day, no kidding. But, um, I'd rather refine that to do anything with, with a food process. You don't have to add more.
The sanitary facilities, the provision of water, I mean, those are really basic stuff.
Right. I know it needs mentioning, but I like to reduce it, just saying, all these issues, just right to the board of health.
Yeah.
Um, if we can kind of, I don't know, make it easy for somebody, I don't like a lot of rules, just tell them where to go and who they gotta comply with. So I don't know how to do that with this?
No, no, I know exact, I know exactly how to do that. You must, prior to making an application, you must obtain the endorsement of the board of health to, to indicate that you've complied with their regulations, but.
It is good to mention it.
Kind of backwards.
We're gonna talk about that, uh, a little bit tonight later on in the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and I think there's, depending upon how the discussion goes, I think there's potentially an opportunity for me to hire places associates and some advice on that too. So it might be worth hanging around a couple of minutes for that discussion.
Okay, and then, uh, the board of health, I know quite a few years ago established, uh, for the benefit of Rhiata Ranch, that you can't sell pets. So that is, that's a, a local bylaw that's already on the books. And I, those, these are the kind of things that I think would trap anybody that was trying to have a wedding, have a party, have a carnival or whatever. If they're on a farm, you would think that they'd wanna be able to sell their excess bunnies or do whatever.
I would say I, I don't think you can do that under state law.
On a farm?
Yeah.
You can, if you're a farm.
No, 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 I, I don't think that we can limit that under state law if someone is a farm, because like you're, to your point.
But if it's a carnival.
Selling a bunny to whoever.
But if it's a carnival or that, we'll have to look at what the board of health regulation says.
Turtles in a tank or something like that, yeah, it's different.
Yeah, right. Yep. And then the other part is I go to the select board jurisdiction, the sale of alcohol, beverages, the use of public properties, including roadways. The sales of items in a carnival or fair, all of that, traveling salesman, all of that stuff is the board of selectmen's jurisdiction. So these are some common things that I, I call them tripping hazards, you know? That, uh, any layperson, farmers don't read the zoning bylaw.
No.
You know, they wanna fill out a form, they wanna know what they need to do and then they wanna proceed and do it.
See you later.
Yeah, so this is not an all inclusive list, it's just to indicate that maybe, maybe they need to. If they come to you for a special permit, maybe they need to have met with the fire and police chief beforehand.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
I would, I would suggest reserving much of that for the administrative process to not put it in the bylaw.
No, right.
To, to the point that the more we put, the more we make it confusing. And when we go back and we wanna make changes, it, we have to go back through town meeting for it, so.
And a lot of people look at it and look at, it would turn them off, if we have too much.
Yeah.
Cause we're trying to make it easier, we don't wanna make it harder.
Trying to. Right, but, but the system is rigged against them already because, you know, we're protecting everybody, health, safety and welfare. We can't deviate from that and that's, you can't deviate from that, yeah, that's the bottom line.
It's a requirement.
And then, uh, I don't know if this is true, but this regulation is adopted as allowed under the home rule amendment. Because you, there is nowhere in this document that says what gives you the authority under the charter or under any other regulation or requirement. And this is allowable under home rule amendment?
Okay. Yep.
So you kinda, maybe we need to pull that to the front. Allowable uses, we, we're just editing a lot of these things. U-Pick operations are defined under the farming bylaw and they have special provisions under master general law. And they have all sorts of waivers and requirements that, you know, if you fall necessarily on a U-Pick, it's not, the, the farmer's fault, those kind of things.
Can I ask, uh, is this exceptional for Christmas trees?
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
Yeah.
You, you define it elsewhere.
Oh, okay.
It is already defined somewhere else.
Elsewhere, yeah. Um, so making a wine, cider, beer or distillery operations, the question that we have is there a percent of the product being made on site? So we give you, are you gonna want a commercial brewery as an adjunct like the farm? Uh, Stone Cow, as that's a heck of a big brewery. And then you get the Choba Valley Winery, they make custom wines, they make distilled products, uh, but they are also a farm. Is there a limitation on the percent of sales derived from the farm versus derived from the brewery? Where they, they stop being a farm accessory use to where they start being a, a distillery?
So what, what do we have, what rules would we have that would do that? Do we have any?
You do not, or none defined.
So, well. So there there is a gatekeeping aspect in the beginning in section one oh one here, uh, where this bylaw shall apply to any property, meaning the definition of a farm as defined in chapter forty eight, section three, which actually then refers you to chapter
Yeah.
one twenty eight, like section two for the actual definition of the farm, that I don't remember off the top of my head.
So it it's two to five acres if you have more than ten thousand dollars worth of product derived. Farm-derived income is considered a small farm, and then they go up and they scale it. Um, they they do do that, but I don't know that they have a correlation to an adjunct business.
So where the advisory committee was coming from with this is, we originally looked at the um, the farm accessory bylaw for Rottlin.
Yep.
And that bylaw had had set it up to essentially be off of Schedule F income. So it was an accessory accessory use if the dollar value of the accessory use was less than the income from the farming. But after talking to all of our farming stakeholders, we found out that that doesn't really make sense for instance, because with the exception of um, of Sawyer's Farm, we don't really have large commercial.
Primary farm, yeah.
Yeah, primary farms anymore. Most of the folks we have are all gentlemen farmers or folks who are retired or doing it as a second or third job.
Right.
So to set it off the Schedule F income, we weren't actually creating any kind of benefit to the farmers that would lead to the preservation of land. So that was why we had moved away from that as a restriction, because the the thought was, well, you could have a farm that is still totally, completely a farm by character, be selling hay and doing some grazing, and probably have about ten thousand dollars of income per year.
Right.
So if you're setting your accessory use off of five thousand dollars of that, you're not actually gonna make an impact to the decision-making around the land. That's gonna increase the likelihood it doesn't get subdivided into house lots.
I hundred percent agree, but I think that there is a threshold.
Yeah, there's.
Or that there is some, as you referred to, gatekeeping aspect. An accessory use is a s- a use secondary to the principal. That's by its very nature. This is a farm accessory use bylaw. Maybe we change the title of it and don't call it an accessory use bylaw. We say a s- I don't have a word. Which is unusual.
Well, that was, that was frankly what we struggled with, and the the advisory committee had three meetings to debate just that. Because there were a couple versions that were put on the table. One was a pure ag accessory, and it didn't get advanced because of what we just talked about.
Hmm.
Um, one was a series of changes to schedule, uh, rather to Article Four, where we just changed the use provisions. But then the thought was as well, that would be, there would be no gatekeeping on that, so it'd be easy to abuse. And then the third option was to do it potentially as an overlay, because then there was a little more opportunity to be malleable with it. But I don't, for all the reasons we talked about, I don't think it works as the overlay.
No.
So I think we kind of end up having to take a hybrid approach and have it be, there's some Article Four revisions that we need.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then perhaps the 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 separate law that we we add on or the the new article is a more true-to-scope, um, ag accessory bylaw, like what we're talking about here. So the the hope was that we could have some of the agro-tourism interests and some of the ecotourism, ecotourism interests combined into the same bylaw.
Right.
But it might not be feasible, uh, to do it that way without creating something that would be too subject to abuse. The other interesting use case that came up at the advisory committee was that you could have a property that is less than an acre, and somebody could do garlic farming on it, because apparently garlic farming is extremely lucrative. And and somebody can plant half an acre of gar- garlic and make many tens of thousands of dollars, and could potentially have a small non-conforming lot making many ten, many tens of thousands of dollars selling garlic. That suddenly becomes eligible for some of these uses if it was just done as a dollar basis.
Would that be like an order of law, not for?
Well, I don't know.
No, it does not.
People love that one. But uh, but yeah, so that was, that was kind of the battle, and that was what steered it that way, so. From, I think we can stay in line with what the spirit of the recommendation was. If we have some other form of reasonable gatekeeping device that, um, that fulfills what folks, what some of our other constituents are hoping for, that fulfills the need to try avoid abuse, but without being overly restrictive. And we struggled with that.
And you will continue to struggle with that, because at what point does Stone Cow become a brewery and not a farm? I mean, that one's not a very good example, because they've got three hundred and eighty-eight acres or something.
Yeah.
Uh, and they've been a dairy farm since the revolution, but uh, if you have a twelve-acre farm and he wants to do a distillery, and he's not growing barley or whatever on his site, at what point is he just a distillery when he's importing products?
Well, I mean, we have also some interesting farms around our area here, Oak, uh, being a very good example, where, for example, there's a winery there. They produce lots of wine, but most of it is imported, but they do grow some of the wine, uh, grapes in 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 that location.
Yeah.
So does this, I mean, it doesn't preclude you from purchasing.
Well, I'm not sure how to, how to put this far away across the opening in the wall here, but there needs, I think the board and everybody needs to determine if you need one, if you want one, because that that's your, your, a distillery makes a lot of money, and you import a lot of materials, and you export a lot of materials.
It also brings good business to the town from an economic perspective, and so that's certainly something considered.
But it it's a principal use, it's not an accessory use.
So there are.
But that's also true.
From a, from a regulatory standpoint, farm brewer, farm distiller, those are, those are terms of legal significance. They're
The farm. Yeah.
they're not arbitrary. So and and that, that was also some of the discussion that happened at the advisory committee. It was like, well, maybe they get specified to folks who are just of, uh, farmer license. But the issue with that is, uh, Sam Adams in Boston is operating on a farm brewer license. But if we're also at the point where we're talking about how we have this really amazingly successful business, and we need to put some limitations on it, that is so far from where we're standing now. I guess the way I I look at it is, what what I've always been told when doing this kind of planning is to focus on what are the, what are potentially the problems for the next twenty years? Like, what's that fifteen to twenty-year impact? And I don't know if it's a little broader that we run into issues in that fifteen to twenty-year timeframe, maybe in the thirty-year timeframe, but I I just I guess there are some factors that maybe makes it worthwhile, because we have a rail spur, it's already getting grain delivered on it. Maybe somebody wants to put in a commercial distillery, a large one, but there aren't any in Massachusetts. They're all essentially small ones.
Can you make a statement or a section with some sort of, not a lot of regulation assigned to it? Do they have a category for that? Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, the way it's written, the making of wine, cider, beer, distillery operations, including tours and taste rooms, where products are either grown or prepared on site. You can refine it to where some products are grown on the site, and then you've addressed some of the integral products are grown on the site, and now you've.
Again, I don't wanna restrain anybody trying to.
So they're growing hops that constitute two percent of the composition of the beer, but it's still grown on site? Is that?
Yeah, or they have, and and one, one thing I wanted to add here was meat, meat production, right? Because meat is becoming a very popular, actually, drink, drink item, and so, uh, cases of, like, for example, where you have beehives and you may have certain amount of your production of, uh, uh, honey, and you also buy honey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Meat, meat is a derivative, wine usually considered, but if you're a purist, it isn't.
Although, um, under chapter one twelve, whatever it is that forty eight refers you to.
Yeah.
Um, viticulture is specifically included as an exempt use, yeah, not subject to.
Yes, agriculture. Right. No, but this is the making of, uh,
But meat's not.
and distillery operations. I mean, I'm just simply saying that, uh, you're allowing it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
And and you're, we're, we've taken four different sections and distilled it down into one.
Hmm.
Because that makes sense.
Right, okay, that feels.
I I look at this here as you're providing us with a framework that we need to start looking at.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Which is, and and I think.
Yeah. We're, what we're trying to do is take out a lot of the chaff.
Absolutely. I don't think we're gonna resolve this here tonight, but I think the fact, correct, and so the fact that you highlighted this here
Oh, no, you're not.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
is certainly something that we need to take back and refine it.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, which is our option. Yeah, no, I I think that makes sense.
And I, I do think the ecotourism works well in here.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's a complimentary use.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I'm a little concerned about the fishing, hunting part, but.
Excuse me, I'll take care of the bears in the back of your yard.
So.
I don't have bees.
All right, so I guess moving, moving on, we'll, I think we're all on close to the same page on that, so I think we'll be able to get to it resolved, and I think you understand where I'm.
Yeah. We do think art galleries and sculpture parks need to have some correlation to agriculture? If you're allowing, uh, I mean, that that one came out of left field. How does an art gallery, sculpture park?
That came in through, uh, the Rottlin suggestion, because the list of uses originally started with that. Um.
As related to agriculture, agriculture.
Remember the res- resister sanctuary. Yeah, be, well, remember.
Or or integrated into agriculture.
Resistors. Because remember that they, they have the gatekeeping provision that essentially sets to income, so
For agriculture.
Yeah.
that it would have been a direct, and even here, it would be too, because the gatekeeping provision that we have at the moment.
Is a farm.
Is a farm, so, yeah, it would be.
Okay, I buy that.
It, yeah.
Yep. Agriculture is a farm use, it it product and sales, it it's included in farming?
Yeah, it's in statute. It doesn't need to be there. Same thing with beekeeping. Um, the stores is an interesting question. Um. I think we I think we need to think about that one.
Yeah, I think you need to add a portion of the product shall be manufactured on, a portion of the sales product shall be
Yeah.
grown, manufactured, or otherwise produced on the, on the site.
I like that change.
Or, I mean, I could see a whole lot of catches in 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 there.
Well, on site or.
But what percentage? I mean, you could still have agway selling Oklahoma.
There, well, there's language out there. Um.
Not that agway would come to town or or tractor supply, but.
Well, dot that agway's expanding. Um. Yes. I guess my my thought on that is there is language on, like, locally produced at a state level, where a portion of the product is generated within so many miles. I think that might be the language from farmers, market.
Market, yeah.
I don't remember where it came from. Maybe some kind of comparable language like that has the limiting factor, so it's not just all agricultural stores.
Because then it's, I mean, if you wanna do a grain feed sales facility, that's a principal use. It's on accessory use.
Yeah.
But there is a accessory use grain, cool and feeds and rotten. That's an accessory use to their farm or an adjunct to their farm that you would really want them to be able to do here in town.
Yep. Yeah, that that makes sense. Um, this item P here, so this is something that we talked about, uh, a bunch, and, uh.
It was a very good discussion.
Yeah, well, and, uh, it was actually one of, well, the discussion that led to this existing, uh, that led to that discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Was the thought that we needed to try to include some things like a ferrier, a satowary, that kind of stuff, tack equipment repair. Because it wasn't clear to me that that existed in Article Four as it is now, although there is a debate that maybe it does, maybe it it doesn't. But the way I read it, it it's not in Article Four as an allow.
Well, again, you know, a ferrier is principal use. He is the delivery of services for.
Accessory.
Yeah.
Most ferriers are running a truck. They're not shooing horses on location, so.
Right.
They are.
Yes, they are. Uh, Bob Hatch at Burnshirt Hills, he runs Burnshirt Hills.
I have five ferries that come to my barn.
Horses, and he's also, but he's also a ferrier.
Come to your barn.
Yes, oh, you mean a bear place.
Yeah, but they come to your barn. You don't bring your horses to them. That would be remarkably inefficient.
No. No, they're.
And that, that would not, that would be a principal use.
Yeah.
So some, uh, some of these, they were splitting the difference again, principal versus.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the.
Or, so this is where I want to introduce supportive use.
Okay.
Not accessory, but farm supportive use, or, you know, I I was having trouble with the word. I'm thinking maybe that's a better. And it really, it has a positive connotation.
Isn't that what we have, services directly supportive of agriculture?
Yeah.
So.
That's where I got it.
Yeah. Well, and we also, we tried to come up with ways that that this would be, um, potentially abused, and it was actually a really good test case for ChatGPT. So we, um, we said that, yeah, if you ever wanna figure out a way something can be abused by law language or something like that, it does remarkable job with it.
Oh, neat.
And it actually did come up with like fifteen uses that wouldn't work, but none of them are viable in the Northeast. Because like crop dusting, um, and stuff like that. We already have airfields prohibited. And, uh, some of these mega commercial farming enterprises, but the reality is, is they don't exist until you get to Ohio, so.
Yeah, right.
Wouldn't happen here. It's not a real problem. So that was where we ended up with that.
Good morning, all coming north.
Yeah, but the rocks aren't going south.
No, they're coming up.
So I don't think we're ever gonna be the corn belt. No. Um, but yeah, so that was, that was kind of the history where that ended up there, so. Um, sale of agriculture-produced project, uh, products. I don't think that's similar to to P.
Then it's similar to O.
Yeah, it's similar to O.
But not necessarily. I mean, I could see agriculturally produced products are hay, honey.
Yeah.
Beef. Pork, chickens.
Yeah, and the thought was to make that, I think the reason that came in is because there were some particular uses that you had to allow under state law. And I think the thought was if we didn't put that in, it's catch all of those grounds to get thrown out by the Attorney General's Office. So I think that was how that ended in there, even though it's potentially redundant, because there was a little bit of intensive drafting. We can come back to that. So one of the things that I would like to jump right into, because I think it's one of the biggest issues, is the three hundred and fifty users.
I'm really curious about that one.
It was, I've, this has been explained several times. It was totally, completely arbitrary as a starting point, so that, that, that.
That's a really bad way to explain a bylaw.
That. Well, no, so that there could be, so that there could be a discussion in the process, and we can get down to a number that makes sense.
Let it be known industry.
But the the problem that we've had so far is when we've talked about this, nobody has been like, oh, well, here's another number that would make sense. People have been like, I think three fifty's great, or I think three fifty's too much. It's like, well, that's not helpful. We need a compromised number. So that's, that's kind of what the thought was on that. And but part of the reason why we ended up there is because, like, a large, we were thinking about like, the idea of a large craft fair that happens like twice a year is probably not impactful on the neighbors. But a Spartan race that has ten thousand people, like Stone Cow and that brewery in Lancaster got into trouble with.
Boston.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah.
Um, where ten thousand people show up, that probably is not something we want, and that's also something that is an actual real risk and not one of those, they'll never actually happen here things.
Right. The, the way I'd start would be, I would, and I can do it for you, figure out how many acres you need to occupy the parking for three hundred and fifty cars, where you have access aisles so that an ambulance or a police car can get through into, so that tells you how many acres. Where you have access aisles so that an ambulance or a police car can get through into, so that tells you how many acres right off the bat.
I, well, three hundred and fifty users does not equal three hundred and fifty cars.
You need space for.
To just identify yourself.
Can you identify yourself?
Sorry, Katie Young, uh Ragged Hill.
I mean, we all know you, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
She's our liaison.
But three hundred and fifty users does not equal three hundred and fifty cars.
That's true.
Cause if you do a wedding or you do a uh corn maze or something, huh?
You'll have half as many cars. You'll have half as many cars.
But even, yeah, maybe less depending because people usually come, like a corn maze, they come as a family or, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I just wanna like slow.
Yeah, there is, there's generally accepted statistical analysis for this, that it's not a one for one.
Well, I'm just. Yeah. No, oh, no, there's, yeah, there's the IT manual, it's Institute of Traffic Engineers, and you find a use that's similar to, and it'll tell you what your occupancy rate is. But I'm just simply saying that maybe we need to figure out how many acres you need for parking and access and work backwards from there. Well, well, you know, if you only need an acre and a half, well, then maybe you want two acres of parking, cause that doesn't seem unreasonable.
Well, look at um like the apple farm where they have the festivals all weekend. People are in and out all weekend. They park like legit in the apple field in between the trees, so.
Right.
Right. Riyetta Ranch where they park.
Yeah, it's because if it's something that's in and out, if it's a wedding, they would all go there pretty much at once and all leave at once. The traffic would be less, so it would be less bothersome throughout the day, unlike Riyetta Ranch.
Right.
But there'd be more at once, so it also kind of depends on what the venue actually is.
Yeah.
Well, I.
But the bylaws kind of silence the a lot of that.
Yeah, I, so I I like what you're suggesting to have it be a real number that it's being set at. Um and we can debate how the number ends up, if we think it seems high or if it seems low, it's just, it's a better approach than just, that feels like a number.
Yeah, I'll question if we go with the number, we'll say it's everything said in town vote, correct, or is this?
Yeah.
Two two thirds approval at uh town meeting, so.
So if we have a number there, the only way we can change that is two thirds of town vote.
Right.
Well, and if there's anything that's going to create difficulty for this passing based upon um what constituent feedback has been, this is literally the only part of it that's contentious. So thi- this is, yeah, this is the part that's important to get right.
The big, the amount of people. Oh, wow.
Well, three hundred and fifty people at a wedding is a pretty big deal. And from the Board of Health, that's a pretty big deal too. From a health perspective.
Well, the three hundred and fifty people, are we counting the just the three hundred and fifty attendees to the wedding? Or are we including the staff, the waiters, the DJ, this?
At the most, you wouldn't have any more than fifty people.
All the other people that go along with the wedding.
Well, it also depends, it could just be legit like the wedding.
Just the guest list.
My wedding, two hundred and fifty in Hubbardston, and then my reception was somewhere else in Westminster, both at residence.
I did a farm wedding over in Templeton. Six years ago.
S- but I did have to get a cop for the road, but there wasn't really a lot of people involved for the wedding.
It was cars.
The reception was, but that was at a different location, so it 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 does, if they do reception, now you're talking food, now you're talking a whole lot of things, people are there a lot longer. If it's just a wedding venue and not a reception on top of it venue, then it's still, it, this is where this kind of stuff goes janky all day long
Right.
cause you're never gonna be able to nail this down.
So the next question, who's gonna count, seriously?
You're not gonna cover everywhere.
Is is the police department gonna count? They're gonna show up and say you got more than three hundred and fifty people or?
No, where where there's gonna be a problem is if somebody keeps doing it over and over and over again.
So.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Correct, and and that's ultimately the situation that we need to do a catch because, and and not necessarily catch because it's not. We're not doing this to have people not do these things. We're having, we're trying to do this so that people do do these things, but they color within the lines, um which.
And they know what the lines are, yeah.
Which has been historically the problem, because there are people who are actively doing some of this stuff now that it's not really.
Better get away with it.
But so as your consultant, you need some better than the wind's blowing that way, yeah, to establish that number.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I I I I think the parking is an easy place to start, um because we're we're talking about the limit being, well, it's five acres before you can start this discussion. So like if it turns out that you can't physically fit that many cars on five acres, then we would wanna think of a different number, so.
Right. And I just don't know off the top of my head, how many cars do an acre?
Yeah.
And if you're.
I could Google it, I bet you can figure it out.
Inside of a building. If you're inside of a building, you got the building inspector and occupancy.
Yeah.
But I did I did a large wedding that number over in Templeton a few, quite a few years ago.
Yeah.
In a field under a tent.
Exactly.
Did you go to that one?
No, I, but that's what my wedding was.
Right, and there was that, I I cooked for that many people.
Yeah.
One acre of land would accommodate two hundred and forty-two parking spaces.
See, I told you.
Yeah.
Well, but so realistically, two hundred and forty-two parking spaces, if it's a corn maze or wedding, that's still a lot of people. That could easily, if you, even if you did your half, what, what was it, one hundred and forty-two cars you said?
Two hundred and forty-two cars.
Then that's your three fifty right there.
Yeah.
Right, but you also have to look at the terrain too, like up in Mount Jefferson Road when the lions go try to.
Of, but yeah.
Yeah.
It was so wet, they couldn't get the cars to drive. You know, so that's another thing.
But that's a really good number, two hundred and fifty-two times two people per car, you're already up to almost five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Each parking space requires a hundred and eighty square feet.
So then that's, then that's not really a limiting factor that we can use to kind of set this.
That's ten by eighteen, yeah.
Maybe this becomes a homework thing where we we take this on as homework to think about, because I think we can probably go into it and try to figure this out.
Well, I'm just thinking if if five acres is your limit, you certainly don't want more than an acre and a half of your five acres to be.
Parking.
And and we gotta talk about the five acres because I think we need to define five usable acres. Because if you've got three acres and two acres are wetlands or the other way around.
Mm-hmm.
That's not usable and it shouldn't be part of the formula, but that's not hard for the planning board to administer.
That five acres comes out of state law somewhere.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. There there's a two to five acre under a farm bylaw, small farm, yeah. But that's gross land encompassed by the farm, not usable.
Yeah.
And and again, you don't really wanna refine this down, but my personal opinion is
Mm-hmm.
you're starting at five acres under the bylaw for these big events, and I think you need an acre and a half for parking. That's me pulling another number out of thin air, but.
Oh.
It's not, right, it's not an unreasonable number, it makes sense, there's some sort of logic behind it, three hundred and some odd cars.
Yeah.
And if you use cars as opposed to people, maybe that's our limiting factor, because then we can relate that to traffic, we can relate that to access, we can relate that to public safety. And you're gonna get two or three people on average in a car.
Easy, especially if you have an event that brings families.
And kids, yeah, right.
Correct. Families and friends.
Right, so maybe you've got three, averaging three per car.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause like when we go to the corn maze, I have my seats full, I have an eight-seater car, you know.
Your car's always full.
I know, just dog pile out, well, we go with like Girl Scouts or something.
Yeah.
And it's our car, the next car with the rest of the scouts, and then there's a family getting out right next to us that's got like five kids, and this is the way it goes, and we all park in the field
Right.
Mm-hmm.
and you know, we all go into the corn maze, it's, yeah.
But the number of cars. Yes, you do need to limit people because that's health, safety and welfare issues, but the number of cars is a is something that's reasonably regulatorily identifiable, somebody can be out there with a counter on cars.
Parking.
Yeah. So my my thought is is that some of a- and part of the reason why we need to go into a ton of analysis was the thought that some of this would cook out in the process. Uh but the other part of it is some of this has limiting factors based upon sanitary facilities and such that aren't necessarily issues of the planning board, um.
Well, you can have a thousand person wedding using porta-johns.
Yeah, you just have to have enough porta-johns.
And it's allowed.
And motion. The parking is a problem, you're busting from one eight.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, so I think.
Most weddings nowadays anyways, there's no parking at the wedding venues because most brides and grooms use shuttle services from whatever hotel their guests are staying at that night. Um due to, you know, drinking and driving and the regular festivities that happen at a wedding with an open bar, so.
So if we had a party at the Redfield, we could bust all the cars up at the night, not at the Rieta Ranch.
So.
I did that, two fifty.
Right.
So I I like what you're thinking about.
But if you're a farmer.
Right, right.
That's not the intent, the intent is a.
That's true, I got off the reading pad, sorry.
Yeah. So I like what you're thinking about, we have to tie this down to something that's more real, um.
And I think.
I think we just need to think about it more.
I agree, I think actually you need to get some of the ag committee to join us in that conversation. Because they're gonna have a different perspective than we are, and I think it's a valid perspective.
They were on the board, they did this.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was seven hours of discussion with this.
Oh, I know, but we're we're gonna change it, maybe they.
Should they come to the next meeting?
No, it was sent along with the full expectation that this is something that would be worked out in the process.
Okay. Okay.
Um because the the specific examples we worked through were like craft fairs, which were like two hundred people and like it was, the the number the number that was the place where it became harmful was much lower than three fifty.
Hmm.
Um.
Well, what's the little white church in before Christmas and after Thanksgiving get? I guess quite a few number of people, don't they?
Oh, the farmers, the Thanksgiving farmers market, yeah, they're there all day, there's no parking, like legit park on the street.
No. I think they must have more than a couple hundred visitors.
Probably throughout the day.
But it's over, it's over a time period, not simultaneously.
Yeah.
But we didn't specify three hundred and fifty over a time period or three hundred and fifty on site at any particular moment.
Right.
Yeah, it's it's max at a given instant in time that you need to really be very careful with.
Well, a wedding, a wedding venue would be, yeah, depends on what your event is and.
Very good example. Sure, where somebody could.
I don't think that you wanna break, I don't think you wanna get to that level of detail, do you?
No, but that's, but that's, but that's what you really have to account for, is is those kinds of scenarios where you suddenly have to involve police, where you have to consider fire and safety.
I don't.
Yeah, well.
I mean, I, the one that comes to mind is like the garlic festival they have in Orange.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a long day, but at any given instant in time, there's really more than three hundred people there at at any given instant in time.
Yeah.
And so at that point in time, you do have to have some form of a ambulance service potentially, or a a fire, or police, or some other.
Well, these are the uses that, any of these uses, I think that with sufficient acreage, if they have, they exceed this threshold, this is where the plan, page two of the application comes in, where the planning board coordinates with the police chief and the fire chief and everybody else.
Right.
Sure. Yeah. So I um.
But, and you know, the selectmen have to issue the common pitulars license and your.
Yeah, and that's if they serve alcohol, they're, you know, there's lots of things, like they could just have the wedding there and then make so, everybody go somewhere else cause they don't wanna deal with the alcohol, they don't wanna deal with the food, they don't wanna deal with the things, you know.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have of, we have that kind of consolidated form, it's just taken around for signatures. I I um I organize an event for the Mountain Bike Association of Berry, and Berry has that kind of form for putting on an event. Um and it's a one-time event, not held for commercial purpose, so they don't hold, they don't hold it subject to to zoning or use restrictions. It's just granted as a select permit.
Yeah, but these are for profit.
Yeah, well, and that that's also, I think, an important thing for the board to take away too, that we're we're talking ultimately. That's different. Yeah, that's for uh to use a conservation facility.
Conservation. Facility which some of these farms are already. She talked about it at the meeting, some of these farms are in like the, yeah, they're in like the DCR trust or there's, like they have so much woodlands on their farm and.
Tractor.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, we'll take a look at that, that's, we don't need to look at that this second.
No, I just, I found it.
Um but yeah, so the important distinction is is we're talking about commercial uses here, we're not talking about like one-time events and those kinds of things.
Not the problem.
It's, yeah, it's it's something that's different, this is about somebody running it as a business, so.
We're the ones.
Watching it will make money.
Right.
Yeah, so like if you're talking about like a wedding, you're not talking about this, so um.
Right, right. 的确会 wedding.
Yeah.
But then, you know, maybe you have a tier one and a tier two. You know, to some, so you have a use that has the extended uh visitation.
Yeah. Page one and page two.
Right, well.
I mean, and that was the intent on how we tried to set it up, where if if you didn't go to this level of intensity,
Yeah, yeah.
um it was just gonna be allowable if you were on five acres, but if you went over um sufficient intensity, then it became subject special permit.
I'm just concerned, any use like a corn maze or crop art or those kind of things, you're really gonna wanna fleece detail.
No, it's too expensive.
No. Well, and it all depends on where, how many backroads you gotta get to to get there.
Right.
Well, and and ultimately, that should, that should really be a decision that goes to the chief.
Yeah, but what empowers him to require that?
There's no regulations on size of events. And take the risk.
Only reason why I needed a cop, cause it was on a Riyetta Sunday, right before Riyetta, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Cause we like to play dangerously.
Okay, so it, well, it feels like we're we're starting to run out of steam a little bit, so let's let's put this as something that we need to talk about more. Just try to base it in um. If it's not, if you don't think three fifty makes sense, base it in something else that you think makes sense, and we'll just have a healthy debate about that. So.
I, I don't know what we're talking about, I think three fifty makes sense.
I mean, I'm just. And that's kind of the problem that keeps happening.
Once you start talking about it, that number makes sense, but it's the actual fear factor, cause people think three fifty, oh, that's three hundred and fifty cars, that's massive, that's gonna be all the time, day in and day out, that's Riyetta on steroids.
Can you?
Yeah, it's not, we had, so at that mountain bike event, we had over three hundred people at um uh Steve Southgrove's house, that was what we ran it out of.
Wow.
And it wasn't crowded at all. Um people parked in a field, it probably took out about an acre, maybe an acre and a quarter or so.
Yeah.
And the event itself, it wasn't crowded at all. Granted, people are out riding all the bike trails in the town farm forest, but it um it wasn't onerous on uh on the neighborhood at all, and that's a pretty small neighborhood up there, so. Granted, big lots, but small neighborhood. So maybe maybe that three fifty is it, but let's, let's come back to it.
Is there, is there any way we could word any of this, something like that we might wanna change? And set that into an area that the board can change this by vote?
No, that's got, that's gonna have to be in the law. Yeah.
No, it's gotta have to be a predetermined number.
Just because you're talking about it being uh, when you talk about requiring special permit, yeah.
Yes. It's a regulatory threshold, that has to be part of the bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's let's move on, just so we can keep moving.
There there, there, you could adopt regulation, you could have the bylaw that gives you the power to regulate certain activities
Yeah, I hear you.
and then adopt regulations relative to it, but I think you'd be skirting a little close to the line if you did that.
We don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
Good job with the shot in the dark number though, Chris.
I like that, I really like that.
Alright, so let's let's move on, so I guess we're into other allowable uses, um butchering of animals not raised on premise. So.
So accessory use, I have a friend who lives in Templeton, and every fall, he collects a hundred, two hundred different deer from different people, butchers them down and packages them up and gives them to the hunters. Um does it in his barn, uh doesn't create much of a nuisance, his neighbors are not very much into it, but I wouldn't call it necessarily the most sanitary process that I've ever seen for the disposal. Is that something that, it's an accessory to farming, not necessarily, but it's an accessory to hunting, which you're allowing under the bylaw. And we really don't want a butchery uh or slaughterhouse as a principal use to farming where they claim it to be farming because slaughterhouse is not holistic farm activity, it's it's where you intake uh livestock that is not grown on the site, you slaughter and butcher it down and do whatever is needed. And I don't think that that's something that the town of Hubbardston wants, we don't have the infrastructure for it.
I suppose we'd probably wanna have some health regulations around that, right?
Well, there are health regulations around that.
Yeah, state and town.
Yeah, well, federal, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think butchering is something that's reasonable, I think slaughterhouse.
Butchering raised on the property, yeah.
Well, even slaughter, yeah, butchering of animals not raised on property, I think that sounds reasonable. Well, even slaughter, yeah, butchering of animals not raised on property, I think that sounds reasonable. Slaughter of animals raised on property, I think that's good, slaughter of animals not raised on property, I think that becomes a problem.
So we'd just have to define butchering versus slaughtering.
Yeah.
Dinner alive.
I mean, that's true.
Oh, wait a minute, when I was a kid, I did that in this barn with my dad, people would bring all the chickens over and we'd take care of that for them.
As long as they don't pay you, is.
Okay.
If they, if they pay you, you have to be a USDA certified.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, to the best of our knowledge, is anybody doing any kind of arbitrage or.
No, nothing I know of.
I think there's only two in the state now.
Should clearing. Yeah.
That do that, it's because of the, the federal rules screwed everybody, and I think there's this blood farm and, um.
Yeah, bloods.
And it takes your screen ears together to, to butcher.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that federal law, uh.
Yeah, you take them out of state, huh?
Pause, uh, clause, yeah, like kinda screwed up the works.
They're in, where's the other one, is it not Orange, it's, uh.
It's Ethel, Ethel.
Ethel, Ethel, basket, bear, bear down the road or something like that.
Right. Bears den, yeah.
Is it bearskin?
Bear den.
Bear den, I used to buy my pigs from them for doing my catering.
All right, so moving on, moving on.
Yeah.
Uh, the traffic analysis thing, I think that does make sense. Um, although I think the issue with it is we needed to be, what are we talking about for a traffic analysis, are we talking about a narrative, or are we talking about like prepared by, I guess we are talking about.
We aren't talking.
The qualified.
Maybe it goes to the selectmen and the police chief too, doesn't it?
So.
Anything on hydrogen out?
What number?
I'm not sure.
So the qualified professional engineer, I think that creates an unreasonable barrier if we're talking about a farm.
It's expensive, yeah, so maybe, maybe it's more than a thousand, maybe this, this whole, uh, uses allowable special permit shall be uses.
Yeah.
Greater than, like a farm restaurant is a pretty low generator of, of traffic and and impacts on the town.
Yeah, that's true.
But special events concerts, maybe we take out campgrounds. An- an- anything that's gonna generate more than a thousand vehicle trips.
There's one with campground left in town.
Yeah.
And that's not that big.
Depending upon how you count that, it's definitely different, yeah.
There's, there's two.
What's that?
There's two campgrounds.
Where's the other one?
That's a long story for a different board.
Fell over.
Oh.
It's, it's a campground.
Did you have the licenses?
Yes, they can pull out permits.
Yep.
Yep, like I said, it's a long story for a different board.
I don't even wanna.
Yeah, moving on.
So, so, yeah, I, I'm reluctant to go with an engineering requirement for something that's supposed to be farm-enabled, um, farm-enabling.
Well, the, the thought process is, this is a big, a concert, or a carnival fair, or something where we're anticipating a Spartan race. Then we want somebody to identify bottlenecks, safety hazards, site distances, all the basic safety criteria. Maybe just a professional engineer, or somebody qualified to do traffic assessments, because. The big problem with any, any of these large, large events is public safety access, period.
Yep.
And if you've got bottle, like, all right, so the example is, uh, in Stowe during apple harvest season.
Mm-hmm.
The access roads will be blocked for three miles to get to some of these orchards.
Well, the last Warrior Dash at Stonekill, I was going across town that day, and it was like a half hour to get through the town center.
Right, and.
And I wasn't even going into the traffic, I was going across.
Right, so there has to be a bypass route, there has, maybe we don't do a traffic analysis, but we say emergency access egress routes.
So I, I agree, and and the advisory committee would agree with your sentiment, but we need to try to do it in a way that's less onerous if we're trying to be farm-enabling.
Well, I'll call it emergency access. Egress. And bypass routes. Not by a traffic engineer, but a traffic analysis shall be required for venues greater than, we'll call it a thousand.
Yeah, or maybe that's an opportunity for signed by the police chief or something, or something along those lines.
Yeah. Approved. Okay, so we'll take traffic analysis part five, we'll just say. That, and, uh, so this is our, uh, drainage analysis. What tr- what happens at a lot of these venues is they rut up the roads, and they rut up the access roads, and they change the drainage patterns. And the floods, a neighbor, somebody downstream, or the washes out the road downstream, Stowe is the example of the orchards and all that kinda thing. That's, so my business partner put this one in, um, I think that's a private civil matter.
I think it's going too far.
Yeah, I think so too. It's too much detail, you know, if you rut up your farm field, fix it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and if your neighbor gets pissed off, you're probably gonna fix it for him, but we don't wanna go that, I don't wanna go down that deep.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any, unless it becomes a permanent venue, you know.
Then you deal with it at the time.
Yeah.
Well, and that. That also would be something that. That I have to assume whoever sits in these chairs would consider when looking at a special permit application for it, so if somebody was looking to have like a regular concept venue with lots and lots of people. Um, I have to put some faith in the planning board doing its job down the road on it, I don't know if we need to put it in as a specific requirement.
I think what you need is a schematic layout of the facilities, so that we know we're not putting eighty outhouses next to their neighbor's backyard or their pool, and and all those. Sensitive receptor type of things, so the general big picture, uh, I call it schematic, so, you know, parking's here, outhouses are here, this is where the event's gonna.
Well, isn't that already covered by the site plan requirement under the special permit process, so.
It is, yeah.
So it, it feels like that, that aspect is covered.
Yep. You're right.
And the board of health been getting wrong with their outhouses, right?
Uh, and if they had a question about it impacting the wetlands, they could just ask for a site inspection, and like the conservation commission could go out and say yes or no, or whatever.
Yes.
That, it would come up on the site plan review anyways.
Right, so if like, I mean, they would know best.
Right, right.
Yeah, becau- yeah, uh, well, I'm just looking at where we tried to have an expedient process, it still requires a site plan, so, yeah, all that would.
Yep, yep, I agree.
Would go. All right, so prohibited uses. Yeah, so slaughterhouse, I don't think that's gonna do much harm, because there aren't many people currently doing it. The other thing that was heavily discussed at the advisory committee, um, and we've held for now, was. Language specifically for like municipal scale commercial composting, the specific example that gave everybody nightmares was the one from Northbrook, where the gentleman has a pig farm. But it's really a large municipal scale composting facility, and, uh, because of the wishy language in our bylaw, they haven't been able to do much about it.
Yeah.
Um, now, where the problem came up is for some operations, like specifically with alpaca farming. When you're composting, you have to have a su- a sufficient mix of green and brown material in order to compost efficiently. And things like alpaca farms generate a lot of brown material, so they end up having to incorporate green material. Um, so they do end up having to bring in some additional, um, off-site materials in order to compost directly related to farm operations.
That's almost true of all composting operations, you need a, a carbon and a nitrogen source.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep, so by saying.
Like even common or if they want wood chips and things like that in it.
Yep, so by saying off-site, we weren't, it, it hurt legitimate farm uses, and didn't create the restriction we wanted against people having, um. Several tractor trailer trucks from market basket coming every day, so that was kinda the, the spot where we ended up on it.
You never got to the clam shells in Princeton?
No, we didn't, although that, that is a good, that good example.
Crunchy.
But, yeah, we, we would like to try to avoid, uh, clam shells, PFAS, and, uh, large commercial operations that aren't reasonably tied to the agriculture that's going on on the property. But we were never able to come up with great language for it, so what we ended up doing was taking that out. There was also a discussion at the advisory board level about, um, other uses not named within the bylaw. And thought was, was that wasn't congruent with what we did with some of the other sections, because we used EG instead of IE. Um, so because we were saying, for example, we were intentionally pulling things out that weren't specifically enumerated within the bylaw.
Yeah, we, we recommend that those be taken out.
Yeah.
For example, it's not a, not a classic wording for a regulation. It is bi-diagrammatic or whatever, but, uh, yeah, it's a little open-ended when you do that, for example. No, I mean, what a lot of towns do, and is otherwise inter- interpreted by the building inspector, but you will find the AG coming down on that pretty hard, cause to find that.
Right.
Sorry.
Terrible.
Yeah, well, that, it, it create, yeah, created issues for like IMP services directly, uh, supportive of agriculture and some of those. Because we're trying to anticipate things that aren't things that necessarily exist, but. So.
Well, the other way to do that is we take it out of here, and we put it into the general use category.
Well, our general bylaws have language that would prohibit everything except for enumerated, yeah, and it's.
Uses listed, yeah. Yeah, I've been, I'm sitting with you where we've.
Been like, oh.
Allowed some of these things.
Yeah, um.
Yes, right.
So I guess that's, that's another place where we need some advice on, on how to handle that, and a better place to start for where we debated.
And I think that the board should consider what you also don't wanna see as an accessory, allowed accessory use to farming. And I would come up with as many things as you can think of, and then what we would try and do is craft them into a concise categorization. So, you know, I don't know. Guinea hens, for example, or, and peacocks are some of the most annoying birds I have ever heard on the face of the earth.
Yeah.
Do you wanna prohibit them somehow, or, and then we would, and I'm not saying do that, I'm just using example.
Yeah.
We would then find a category to say that such uses that create a nuisance, et cetera, et cetera, are prohibited.
But then you have to define what the nuisance, the threshold is.
Right, well, I, I would also.
Yeah, well, no, we would define it in terms of decimal impact and and those kinda things, but, you know, cows move, move when it makes a noise, so.
Yeah, but understanding that this is going to go through town council review before it goes on the warrant this time.
Yeah. They're gonna have a joyous time with this, cause this isn't something council does very often.
I mean, the, the, as long as, as long as we don't put a bunch of restrictions on prohibited uses, I don't think this is gonna have much of a problem with the attorney general.
Yeah.
Because it is in line with what public policy is, um, for enabling farm use, um.
And that's why we want as many of the defined terms to be equally defined under state law. So we're not making the definition, state laws making the definition, state law changes automatically changes the definition of your bylaw without you having to do anything.
Yeah, I would also suggest that any prohibited use we put in there, we also need to put in a rationale with the prohibited use. Or else it won't fly through, or if, if we don't put it in the bylaw itself, we need to put it in our cover letter when we send it to the AG's office.
Okay.
Um, because they haven't been good at calling to ask questions about stuff like that, like they used to be.
Yes. Um, I just have a quick question with all of this, you said that you would want the, um. Building inspector, zoning enforcement officer to take a look at this and make sure it is absolutely clear to him, because I know Katie has raised the question, or the comment in the past, or the previous. Um, because our bylaws are so vague, some, you know, Duffy's really great, pasts have come in and solid bylaws and just done whatever they felt because they were so vague. So do you want me to go over or have a schedule meeting with Duffy to go over all this, and see if he says?
I would recommend it's too early for that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
I wish to pray to him.
And really forces all this, just so I know, in case anyone comes to me with questions, would it be Duffy?
Yeah.
The, all of our enforcement authority, with the exception of our scenic road bylaw, is, uh, invested in the ZEO. The only thing where we actually have our own, our own authority, to the best of my knowledge, and listen wrong, is the scenic road bylaw, we can issue fines and such directly for that, but we don't, we can't for anything, we have to through him.
Okay.
Easy and forceful, officer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Our authority's delegated.
Uh, uh, I don't think that's a hundred percent right.
Sorry.
I thought at one point the town made, I remember we had a town administrator named Trudy.
That was a while ago.
She, uh, she wanted that changed in the zoning bylaw, not the planning board, or a delegated officer or something, I know the police can act to, uh.
Well, they certainly don't know that. If that is the case.
I could be, I could be confusing one another town.
Yeah, I think our delegated official is the.
Well, there's no question he's the primary, but I thought that it was modified a long time ago.
Also, if that's the twenty twenty-two copy, there were some changes around some of that language in the twenty twenty-three copy that I don't think has been put on the website yet. Because that was in the, uh, that was in the changes. Uh, preferences to the building commissioner.
Yep.
And zoning enforcement officer, where, where they were confusing, we replaced one with the other in order to be consistent, so.
You're in charge now.
But it's the one that's published, so, you know, affected one.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer.
Okay, yeah, either way, that's not important for this particular discussion, all right, so next steps. So, Bill, do you wanna take another crack at this, or should we take another crack at it? I know, um, Mark, who is one of the volunteers who originally wrote this, was also willing to help out and contribute some of his thoughts and some of his time if, if it was necessary, so maybe, um. Maybe you take a look at it, think about it, and then we schedule a meeting with the three of us to come up with a new draft and bring it back to the board.
Sure. I cannot do about fifteen.
Yeah, I, that's not a problem, I think, uh, I think we, we, if we are having a substantive discussion, um, to refer to the select board the first week of March, or early in March, I think that works for the timetable for June, right? The meeting for March is very early, it's like the fifth, so, we can talk about that. By the way, if we're talking about passing it around in March, we should be.
Yeah.
We should be good to go by June. Yeah. That's the latest, though. Okay. All right, so, I think we're on course, I think it's gonna be close, but I think we can do it.
Yeah.
Go team.
Very optimistic.
Okay. This one, I think.
But if, you know, anybody can think of things that you do not want, just list them, whether it's reasonable or not is not the criteria, we just wanna list to kinda.
Yeah.
See if there's a theme that, uh, slaughterhouses add up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, send those directly to Patricia and Bill, uh, just so we don't have, uh, a threat, I understand you're a soft version of this.
Bill, can you? Huh?
Can you send a soft version of this up to everybody?
Yeah.
All right.
Meaning Microsoft Word, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much for this, so, I'll, I'll start, um.
Yeah.
Patricia will start an email for it, so get that, get that scheduled.
Patricia will write that down.
Yeah, loves that work, like, um. All right, so we have, um, we have a couple other items on the agenda, and Bill, if you could hang around for a little bit, um.
It's gonna be. I'm trying to pull up.
It, it should be very quick.
And I have a question for you about the A and R scanner in the office as well, so.
The what?
The A and R scanner, the big.
Oh, yeah.
It has, well.
It's not working?
Nope.
That's it.
Yeah, that's fine, I see, well, finding my agenda.
If you could point me in the right direction, move call, get fixed, that'd be great.
It's four minutes?
All right, so.
I won't even turn on.
So just to go a little out of order, so we don't keep Bill any later than, than necessary.
Yes.
So we have matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. Uh, we actually have a couple things, the first one being we have a series of DLTA proposals. There's two of them and they're in the folder for folks. Uh, and just to, for the benefit of the public, we're talking about direct technical local assistance. This is the type of assistance that's provided through MRPC. And we have two things that we believe we need help with. Also to refresh the board's recollection, and the end of last year, we, we put together a priority list for projects uh, and then approved it as a board and we advanced that to Nate. So Nate put together these two drafts, the first one being a request for DLTA funding, to update and modernize special permit and site plan review process. And I think all of us have had conversations at some point about how this is something we need as a town. And this is the, uh, the higher of the two priority items, but I also believe it's probably the one that's less, the least likely to get approved by MRPC. Just because they have published priorities for the year. And although economic development and such is on the list of priorities, it's number three on the priorities. Uh, and we all heard from Karen tonight, who's one of the decision makers on what gets forwarded to the commission. And I'm also on the commission, so that makes me one of the voting members on what gets forwarded to the commission. It's more likely for stuff to be forwarded if it has some kind of impact or tangential relationship to MBTA zoning. So there's a chance this might not get forwarded, although it is important. If this does not get forwarded, uh, what I am going to propose is that some kind of joint committee with the planning board and the select board, work with the town administrator's office and I don't, we have some planning board funding where perhaps we talk to places associates about also getting some support and some feedback on this early on. But the way I would see that would have to go is that would have to be more of a worker be kind of, um.
Katina Steiger, FaceTime.
That'd have to be more of kind of like a, a working, uh, group and get further along because it would likely be expensive just to have Bill go in and redesign all of our bylaws. So, um, yeah, uh, that I think is what there is to say about that particular one. I don't know, Nate, do you have anything to add about that item before we go to the second one?
I was more positive about it before tonight when I mentioned it to Karen and she said, oh, gosh, that mess, so.
There is, there is an easy way to do that. And the board, you search adjoining communities, alright, communities, and you find processes that make sense in other communities. And steal the best parts, mimic the best parts, and put it together as a whole. There are a lot of really good communities that have really good, clear special permit and site plan criteria.
Do you happen to have some that you would like us to mute, that you can suggest?
Yeah, let me get a list. You know, we work around the four ninety-five belt. We wouldn't want to do something like Concord because they go a little on the far side. But some of the other communities, Harvard, kind of similar in character, sort of. And other communities like that that have a really straightforward agricultural-based process.
Yeah, Nate and Patricia have also started assembling one, uh, because there's been a project that we've been working to try to get ready to put in front of the, the planning board to look at our administrative fees and proceeds. And it's not quite there because we're having a discussion about, well, what's administrative and what, what has to be done at, uh, a zoning bylaw level. It's not quite ready for primetime discussion, um, but that ties to it too, so some of that exists. But that's, uh, that's the one I think is most important, but I think it's less likely to get, uh, get allowed. But the next one is, um, is revised subdivision rules, uh, to allow development. And I think we need to work on the naming for that. But specifically what we're looking for is a breakdown. And I think places, uh, Bill, I think I looked at this for us a while ago, so you might actually have information on this. This is specifically trying to address, um, what we need to do to try to have some of, um, some of the larger properties on the northern side of town, um, not be locked in as badly as they are by our bylaws.
Are you referring only to sand pits or would this potentially be open to, uh, like the stone quarries and?
I tried my best to broaden it a little bit, but I didn't exactly get there. So a little broader than just the sand pits, but there's not a ton more than that property, any?
Well, that's why I wondered if you were trying to target that property or if you wanted to have something broader that could be potentially leverage for other types of, um, situations that we have.
In my mind, while writing, that was, the sand pits were kind of the main attraction here, but if we could drag other parcels and other opportunity in, then that would be great.
Okay.
I don't really understand, so why would you be rewriting subdivisions when it's zoning that controls land use?
Uh, well, we want to do a breakdown on exactly that.
Oh.
And identifying, uh, what barriers should be there, what barriers shouldn't be there.
Geez, I could do that off the top of my head.
Yeah.
That's endangered species habitat, it's aquifer, because it truly is good aquifer land. It's, its access is difficult. But it could be developed in any number of ways because it's sand and gravel, so it could do a sewage treatment plant or wastewater treatment plant. And well down there would be a very public water supply, well would be very easy to achieve.
So, yeah, and part of the reason this is timely is because we're always like, nobody would ever have interest in doing a forty B.
No, they wouldn't, in our town.
We talked to like, like three people who came into Nate's office considering doing forty Bs, so, uh, we're.
Why?
We're creeping up on time.
And it's now been sold. I could tell you more about that, but not on camera.
A forty B?
It's not out of his, out of his realm of possibility.
Doesn't make sense in Hubbardston.
Yeah, um, well, the times might be changing on that.
The owners with an engineer right now trying to figure out what's feasible on their end. Cause they came to us and kept saying like, oh, tell us what we could do, tell us what we could do. And we ended up having to tell them like, we don't do that, like, go and tell us what you'd be interested in.
They can get up to fifteen to twenty units per acre under forty B. Um, the only way that the town can deny the development is health, safety, and welfare. Recently, I forget what town it was, the housing appeals court denied the fact that the fire chief said it was hard for him to get to the development.
Yeah.
So there, the threshold for approving a forty B is daunting for a town to challenge a forty B. But our, how, our affordable numbers, you can go and, the reason Gardner doesn't have forty Bs is because they have market rate rentals that match forty B prices, I mean.
I think they'd rather work with us in other ways.
Okay, now, so we're talking an open space residential development.
Yeah.
And by the way, we're not allowed to do senior housing anymore, even though that's in our zoning bylaw. Because the state has ruled that's discriminatory, you can't, can't do senior housing developments.
Exclusively senior.
Correct.
Yeah.
Age restricted.
Yeah, so the, the description there and the specificals, it's, um, it needs some revision, uh, in terms of that, but that's ultimately what the, the need is, is that there's been kind of, I don't wanna call it a hole, you know, plating around that, but.
That is the perfect place to do an overlay district. Perfect, it, it falls under all the categories. It's a unique and discernible portion of the town that has characteristics unto itself that aren't shared by other portions of the town. And the type of development that it could withstand is, is also unique because of the underlying soils and strata and, and its ability to support infrastructure. And even the extension of infrastructure from the city of Gardner, so you could do an overlay district over there. Not, and add to zoning, not change zoning. Uh, and an open space residential development, we have in our zoning bylaw, but it's not very good.
Does it make more sense for us to review that?
Yes.
You said?
Yes. Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I can revise this.
Well, and, and that was something that Mark always suggested. That was his, his bucket list item that he never got to in the office, which was that if there is anything that allows us to meet the affordable house and challenges we have and not mess up the town, it's, uh, doing an open space residential development.
Right, so your open space residential development bylaw was modeled on some of the early ones? Randall Arnton, some of the other guys, and it has great aspirational goals that no developer would ever consider. So it, it, on paper, you know, if you're not a developer and you read it, it's great, this is great planning. But you would never want to develop there. What we want to do is we want probably to do, uh, the sale of development rights on portions of projects. So that if you buy a protected piece of property and you have the ability to develop endangered species partially contained, they can take that and preserve it and you allow them to build a little bit more densely somewhere else.
Mm-hmm.
And you're protecting, and all of that can be accommodated in open space residential development, and it's really straightforward stuff.
It also reduces the cost of providing services.
Right.
Because you create a lot less road.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, no, there's a lot of interesting things to it. I, I think that is ultimately, um, the way to try to go with it. The other, the reason that this becomes more likely to be granted is because housing is specifically a program priority for MRPC. And although we are not an MBTA town, um, we're only not an MBTA town by a little bit and.
Yeah.
If we're, if, if we talk about our job being to think fifteen, twenty years out, it's hard to not look and say.
It's coming.
There's gonna be one more train station in twenty years, thirty years.
Clean up the road.
Yeah, it's, we.
Hundred and ten.
If, if it really was, yeah, if the Westminster Station really was in Westminster, we'd be an MBTA town.
Yeah.
And the fact that it's actually in Fitchburg is why we're not.
Correct.
So, um, it's not that far.
But the, so the MBTA zoning presumes it's, was written in Boston, and it presumes you have sewer and water. And that is the hu, the, the single most largest constraint to development in Hubbardston is, for more than single family homes, is sewer and water. So everybody knows Stacy's Plaza, the pizza place, she had to lease and obtain an easement for a well because she serves twenty-five or more people on a regular basis, which puts her a public water supply. Which means you have to have five acres of land fully restricted for the protective radius around the well. And that's a big burden and the waters, water in Hubbardston, depending upon where you are, is also a, a difficult time. Um, sewage disposal is absolute. Where Town Hall is, this entire ridge line is some of the worst soils in town. And even, it's our commercial center. So the north of the town, they don't have those problems. That is beautiful sand and gravel, as we all know. Can get a wastewater treatment plant in there or connect to the city of Gardner, because that area is tributary to the Gardner water supply. But it is unique up there and, uh, I even know where I'd put a municipal well off of Pitcherville. We own a piece of land that projects into a wetland, that's kind of this long linear skinny piece. And we could put a, a well right there and it's surrounded by wet, recharged wetlands, it would be perfect. I've thought about this.
Yes, you have.
Yes.
So this steps off of DLTA a bit. And more into community one stop.
I'm paying attention, yes, community one stop.
All right, I'm gonna take another look at that one.
But the affordable housing component really needs to be intertwined in it too, right?
Yeah, but the.
Is that your goal?
But, but ultimately the answer is the, the modernization of residential open space rules because.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I mean, that's foundational. The point though I'm trying to make here is, is we have also, and I'm trying to introduce this here because we have discussed many a time, the lack of opportunities that we have here in the town to create affordable housing. And it's a big issue that we have specifically with regards to the total numbers and the percentages we have to meet as a, as, as a, as a community.
Yeah.
And the new owner of that parcel, of that property, did admit that he was not against, and he's actually in favor of a affordable component.
So the beauty of an open space residential development, so our, our standard residential development is a twenty-four foot wide road with curbs and drainage and two hundred feet of frontage per lot, two acre lots, all that kind of stuff. That's a darn expensive road to build these days, it's somewhere north of six hundred dollars a foot to build that road. And in Hubbardston, that makes no sense whatsoever with the retail prices of our, our houses. In an open space residential development, you allow the developer to develop far more densely. The infrastructure is much more tight, so you have seventy-five to a hundred feet of frontage, half acre lots. But there's a trade-off for that. And you can, you can do it in different ways, uh, and communities do it in different ways. But you can say, if we grant you the waiver to do seventy-five foot frontages and increase your lot count by X amount, you take half of the increase of the number of lots that he can get, you can change that number, but traditionally you take half. If normally under an open space residential development, he can get twenty-five, and you're gonna reduce the frontage, he can now get thirty-five. So he's got ten more, five of those units will now be restricted to be affordable. And they don't have to be, they can be townhouses, they can be single family houses, they can be duplexes, they can be whatever he or she desires to develop. But that's what an, an open space residential development gives you, the board, the ability to negotiate with the developer to a common goal.
And I think that's also, it's a more palatable way to approach it because it's also very clear in that situation that what you're talking about for affordable housing isn't stigmatized low income housing. It's something that's very different.
Right, well, under, even under a forty B, on the exterior, so forty B is known as a comprehensive permit. And the exterior of an affordable unit cannot be readily discernibly different than an at, uh, full rate market rate unit. The interior, oh, yeah. So, yeah, they'll have the Home Depot cabinets and all that kind of stuff, but, uh, the exterior.
Many of our homes have anyway.
I have them.
So, exactly, what's the difference?
Money.
Yeah, it's true, I mean, but from the exterior versus the interior, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, so, um, we are, oh, yeah, we are definitely running pretty far on time. But yeah, that's, uh, that is the part that, uh, that I'm happy that you hung around for.
Yes, thank you.
Um, oh.
I didn't even charge you for it.
The, uh, the other, the other quick part, so there's been a discussion going offline that kind of culminated today. We talked about it at the last meeting, um, the board had, um, had, uh, agreed to send me out to work with Bill and work with Nate and essentially kick around the idea of having a pre-sub process, pre-submission, an informal pre-submission process or pre-submission meeting for, uh, the cannabis permits. And we've been working on that, um, to try to get something together for that. So that, um, we can present something to the board and hopefully have the board agree on what we think should be waivable or what we, or what we would consider waiving or what we would consider redundant. Either way, some form of technique or tool for trying to streamline the process a little bit is ultimately what we're trying to get at. To not have it be super onerous while making sure everybody's rights still get heard.
For renewals. For renewals.
Yeah, for renewals, but like we talked about, renewal doesn't really exist under a bylaws, it's a re-permitting, um.
Cause your permit expires after, yeah.
Yeah, so. I don't remember where we left off in the discussion at this point, so were we, uh, we have a draft memo that we had talked about, I think we're, we're considering some revisions to the memo and doing that in lieu of a meeting, um, whether, we might as well just have a quick conversation about that and then close this meeting.
Well, I have copies of the memo.
Thank you.
That I sent you.
Uh, yeah, uh, does everybody have just a couple more minutes?
I can leave by ten after.
Okay. Um.
How about I do this real quick, summarize?
Okay.
My, my opinion, so first thing, the memo I wrote said, any decision is the board's decision, it's not places associates that decide. I think that all he needs to do is he needs to take his original submission. And let's just, by example, say the environmental analysis. Handwrite on a copy of what was submitted, not changed, modified by doing this, not changed, not changed, not changed. And I want him to go through the, the, uh, site plan and scribble on the site plan, we changed this, our parking is in the front offset. I know that the zoning board of appeals gave them a waiver to it, give us a copy of that, hand scribble on the site plan what has changed. Hand scribble on the environmental analysis, hand scribble on all the other narratives to say changed. And if changed, what's the change? Doesn't take an engineer, the applicant can do it themselves. Then he has submitted a complete application to the board, you can not waive anything. You can say that he has addressed all of the originally required components of the application. Hardly an onerous thing for any applicant to do. And then the board can take that up and you can query and question him and do all those kinda things. So I thought that would be a very easy process. I also said in my memo that he should submit the full application form, he should get the certified list of abutters, he should pay the fee, he should get the tax collector to sign off, because this is a re-application, even though it's a renewal. And you are going to need to hold a public hearing, you are going to need to notify abutters. So treat the very front, the formal front end.
Right.
Like he's a new applicant, but everything else can be very easily addressed.
We should have everything we need.
Can, can we also include in there, at, at the case in point, this is the complaints that we received last year? How those potentially have been addressed?
That is in your special permit to say that if a complaint is filed, he has to address those and address that to you.
Since he's, since, but, but.
But didn't you though? Yeah, they.
He, they, we did have the, we did have the meeting, he indicated how he was addressing it, but we have not received the results of that.
So that's part of your deliberation to renew.
Okay, that's where I wanted to go, and so we can include that as part of potentially even him, him or her being able to provide or produce evidence as to.
Exactly, and I would think that's a very, very reasonable thing to ask for.
So it's just that we can do this all in one meeting instead of having then another meeting thereafter, I'm prepared.
And my, my goal for you is, I don't want you to waive anything. I want a complete submission, you don't need to waive it, he just needs to say, nothing's changed.
Yeah.
And that's good enough, he's addressed the question. And if it's changed a little handwritten narrative, please write it clearly, um, that should do it.
Saves time and money.
Yeah.
It's not burdensome on you, it's not burdensome on him or me.
No, that sounds reasonable, and where there are changes, they're obviously gonna need to fill because I, I know they've talked about proposing some changes in the revised permits, but.
Can you also put down on your, uh, response to this, saying if you have made some changes and you need to bring appropriate people, come to the meeting, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only other admonition I have on, and I shouldn't use that word to you, um, you should not discuss the host community agreement whatsoever, ever, nothing. That's the board of selectmen's purview and not yours, and you should keep it out, other than to say, this permit is conditioned upon the community entering into an agreeable host community agreement, so anything in the host community agreement, not your problem.
We've typically, we've typically done that, it's, it's not us who brings, brings it up, it's sometimes the individuals who actually come.
Constituents.
Right.
These meetings.
Uh, the TA was looking to comment.
We're gonna be dealing with HCA's on a slight board level in short order. And both potential applicants are working with McCarty engineering anyhow, so if need be, they would have an engineer ready, ready to go.
Yeah, I just would insulate this board from that, it's not within their purview of them, say, if you don't have one, this permit's invalid. And they do have one, so, so, yeah.
Bill, what I'll do, and those special permits do come across, even just like the first one, maybe I just make a checklist for them to say, this is what you need to bring to the meeting, please bring it to the meeting. So, just like I do with any other public hearing or anything like that, there is a checklist and maybe I make a template checklist and I can add or subtract whatever it is depending on the special permit.
Anyway, we can make it easier.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, the certification that comes from the taxes, from the tax.
That's.
Only on the land and the property that has been assessed and that goes out on.
That's listed on the application form, yeah.
Okay, does not include anything other than that, so that's where I was, just wanna make sure, is, is that, and I'm just thinking about, uh, the, the one next to, um, what is it, the, uh, the one where they still, don't they pay a certain amount also that is not part of the HCA?
Yep, but.
Not anymore.
I, I, either way, that is one of those conversations that we're seeking to insulate this board from.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that there, there's nothing there that if they had committed to the town a certain amount, that that, that they're gonna order.
That's all HCA.
Yeah, that's, that's not funny.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go with our consultant's, uh, opinion on this and let them plan a board discussion on that topic, so.
That's fine. Very good.
Uh, any?
Bill, should a applicant owe monies to the planning board and not the town treasurer collector proper? Would that come up at the point in which her office signed off on that form or just later in the process while in discussion with the planning board?
I don't know.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do we have any of those circumstances at this point in time, or have they paid up for all of these?
Yeah.
There's people who owe?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's a very interesting point because I think from our perspective, we should hold.
No.
Part of the permit.
Ah, I think it's part of the per, I don't know.
At least do that.
I, I, either way, that's.
It's not a lot of money.
Yeah, either way, we're not gonna forget about that, but it's not an issue that we have to address tonight, um, where.
Well, that's my.
Almost all of your special permits say this permit shall not be considered active until, unless all consultant fees have been paid and are up to date or whatever the, the language is in there.
I'm confident when it comes time to do the permit will get paid, so.
Yeah, right.
Um, alright, so I'm gonna, gonna advance the agenda and move it into if there's any additional public comments. Alright, um.
We'll make a motion to adjourn, sir.
Here in a first, do we have a second?
Aye, second.
Here in a first and second, non-debatable, calling the vote.
Woman's eye. Shagger eye.
You may all leave.
And the chair is eye.
Still alive.
We are adjourned.